Good morning. I'm going to call this meeting of the Connecticut State Board of Education to order. It is called for nine thirty a.m. and then it's about nine thirty-five, so I believe we can get started. Let's begin with the ready for the place of the meeting.
I'm the president of the United States of America. I'm the chairman of the board of education for which is a one nation, under God, individual political freedom for all.
All right, I am Karen DeBois-Walton, newly chairing the Board of Education and welcome you all here. We'll begin with our public participation. We do have a list of people signed up to present. We'll just remind that we'll ask you to speak no more than three minutes and we'll give you a reminder as you're getting to the end of that time.
Our first speaker is Darrell Wilson.
Right here.
Perfect.
Greetings, members of the State Board of Education. My name is Darrell Wilson. I serve as an alderman in the Norwich City Council for the city of Norwich and it's my pleasure to sit before you this morning in support of the charter renewal for the Integrated Day Charter School. Knowing the unique nature of this school, it has an important meaning for the city of Norwich. I'm fortunate also to serve as the lead paraprofessional, coach, and also chair of the Safety and Security Committee at IDCS. Being an elected official and a community member, we've watched Integrated Day Charter Schools become a gem here in the Rose City for over twenty-five years now. But on a serious note, it's important to recognize that IDCS has played a major role over the last ten or fifteen years in the city of Norwich for both educational pathways for students and families. With Northumberland Schools having an aging infrastructure and unable to expand many of its school buildings, the eighty percent of IDCS students that go to, who would go back to Norwich Schools would be taxed with a large burden of larger class sizes and inadequate possible resources as far as getting the needs that they need in their education. So IDCS plays an important role in providing that different concept of learning and manageable class sizes. It's also notable to put that they have this in-depth thinking of critical pedagogy and challenging students to think and discuss the important issues facing our society today. Each staff member, family member, volunteer, community member that walks through the doors that IDCS realize that it's a great school, they interact and dialogue with one another so that they have this sense of community, culture, and academic excellence. It's important also to point out that Northumberland Schools has taken some of the practices from IDCS and is now implementing and using them in their own schools. And there's a working relationship between the district and IDCS and it's important to realize that we understand that we have to work together in order to put our students and families first. Again, I appreciate you for allowing me to speak in front of you and we at the city of Norwich definitely support the renewal of the IDCS charter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ally Martin.
I'm Allison Martin, a parent of the Integrated Day Charter Schools. I'm asking today for you to kindly renew our charter. We've been a part of the charter school family for seven years now. Our two children are in third grade and sixth grade. I'm currently a member of the governing board for the school as well. My husband and I love so many things about the charter school, but one that tends to come up more often than not is this right here, right? Public speaking, everybody's crux, at least when I was growing up, even if you got exposure in Cleveland High School. Our children have the luxury of studying pre-cats, they're presenting their research projects to most of their peers and learning more and more. They can choose a topic that resonates with them and share it with their peers. They have to integrate each subject matter within that research, which is really impactful, really challenges them to go above and beyond and look at things from all different aspects. When my oldest son was in third grade, he came home and he told me he was going to do his research on a pangolin, so I quickly corrected him and said, "Penguin?" He said, "No, Mom, pangolin, it's a native species." So these kids are learning a lot and will help as the adults too. The children weigh in on the presentations, commenting on what they like, constructive criticism, how they can help better themselves for their next presentation. The support from their peers is overwhelming to be in that environment. We have so much broken presentations over the years that have built confidence in their work and are excited to give their presentations to their peers. So thank you for your time. We love the charter school and we hope that you renew the charter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julia Cronin.
Good morning. My name is Julia Cronin. For the past twelve years, I've been a middle school science math teacher at the Integrated Day Charter School. Teaching is a second career for me. I became the profession after spending seventeen years as a research scientist advisor. I thought that my degree in education and certification to teach, coupled with my volunteer experience in my own children's classrooms and service on my town board of education, provided me with all of the tools I needed to be a successful educator at the charter school. I couldn't have been further off stage. I walked into the classroom prepared to teach a robust and demanding curriculum. What I didn't realize is that IDCS is more than just the curriculum and the test scores, it's about the kids that we teach. I was fortunate to be paired with two IDCS veterans who walked me through the school's ideology as it is expressed through its tenants. They patiently listened to me prattle on about rigor and test scores while gently reminding me that IDCS is more than just the numbers, it's about the whole child. Over the years, I've seen the profound impact our tenants have had on our students. Our tenants are more than just words on the page, they are what we live and breathe every day. They are the fuel that feeds the learning that goes on in our school. I've learned that the role of education shouldn't just be about the curriculum, it's about inspiring lifelong learners, it's about empowering our students, it's about fostering leadership, it's about creating community, it's about teaching the whole student, not just the subject matter that we manual recertification in. IDCS teaches the whole child and teaches the whole child. We see these results every day in classroom discussions and during morning meetings. We see these results while spending time with our learning buddies and at all school events. We see these results in service learning projects and student-led conferences. And yes, we even see those results in the test scores I was so worried about when I first started. This holistic approach doesn't come easy. In fact, I can say with confidence that I've never worked so hard in my entire life. I've been there for twelve years and I've yet to teach the same content in the same way twice. The reason for that is simple. Every year, I get a brand instead of students who have their own unique set of strengths, interests, and areas to develop. I never had the same classroom, so it's the same reason that I wouldn't teach it the same way. Though I've never worked so hard in my life, I've also never had such a rewarding career. Seeing the growth that these children make academically, socially, and emotionally is unlike anything I've ever experienced. There are so many things about IDCS I wish that you could come and experience. And while I recognize that you all have very busy schedules, I'd like to personally invite you to our research night on May fifth and sixth from five thirty till seven. Research night is a culminating event for our seventh and eighth graders where they present their long-term research project. The topics they have chosen are impressive. They run the gamut from cryptocurrency to gun control, from the gender gap to substance abuse and supply prevention in teens. Our students aren't afraid to tackle difficult topics and share what they find with you and I promise you, you won't be disappointed. Twenty-five years ago, the State Board of Education granted the original charter for IDCS, you made the right choice and what we do is definitely working. Thank you for your continued support of our school and I urge you to support our renewal for the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Stringball.
Good morning, Tom Stringball, Manchester, Connecticut, a frequent visitor from time to time. I'm glad today it's a more calmer atmosphere without the anti-mask being drawn with the relaxation, hopefully it'll be more common sense when it comes to vaccine and vaccination and spending on the audience here will be pulled together as Americans and who would trust in a better way. Last month, we flagged this three-month, forty-year anniversary and want to recommend an annual geographic into the depth of Black stewardors finding wrecks of slave ships over the last three hundred years in West Indies and coast of, eastern coast of the United States. They were ancient on a segment, one of the old TDS new dollar and so it, well, I'm probably maybe sending slaves myself in a very hourly but important one. I think history is important because the backlash is happening now, same as before, not just critical race theory, but learning about history and our important parts. So I'm concerned about these banned books, whether in Manchester or in Norway, visiting there, I saw banned books, which is turning back four fifty-one, everyone after Henry Way, Ray Gatsby, Toni Morrison's books, Bola and others, and I don't intend to read Klein Comber or controversial titles even if we within a time box and these types of time, but we can learn about slavery and other ways about free blacks, Benjamin Smith, children who are fighting for freedom, he's in Panchitch and other books about inventors and learning about one or two that made a difference, such as Pro Kendrick, getting rid of Whipping Cost and March Edition in Smithsonian Magazine, whether you see other different editions worth getting, when, you know, scientists I didn't really know, but, you know, overcome my show and then, you know, we just kind of see the justice for it and then. American District Magazine is still going strong, they talk about Tom versus Ward, but that Virginia's resistance and, but that one was Little Rock, that's worth getting, coming out six times a year, that's very good. And I don't know if it goes back to science, but I know Scientific Magazine, American Magazine, March Edition has all of it, it's changed the world, and Social Bullings and other related articles, so I think it's worth getting, we have this real knowledge out there, we have critics out there, there's two sides to the story. And the real truth of it is, we went home by a trip history and it's retarded, David Daniels, the Durden, an army, both two histories of the United States, indigenous genocide, racialized slavery, hypercapitalism, civil liberties and others, and I think the report is important as well as shown in the book, a book called Woke Racism, and he's talking about actually learning the proper way of reading. I don't always agree with him, but he's both maybe right getting, you know, the shit woke racism, he's an African-American language, he's been in Manhattan, he's a junior college professor now for many years, so it really comes down to respect.
You committed to wrap up?
Okay, so it comes down to respect for all individuals and support for the Ukraine, but I'm hoping to treat the refugees and call them much better. There's complaints on them in this way, it's hard to correct, they don't have a lot of type of racism and discrimination in it. Human rights are a problem everywhere in the world and it's enough for all people here in Brooklyn. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, thank you all. I've seen no other public comment and there is no reason for executive session this morning.
Correct.
Yep, all right, good. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the February second meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes required? Edit. Action. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that was your carry.
Commissioner.
Thank you very much and good morning, everyone, and thank you, Board Chair Karen DeBois-Walton. Again, a new welcome. Greetings to all our board members. I believe we're all present here today, which is really great, so it's wonderful to see everyone. I will begin my report, it's in your supplemental packet, but I will begin my report today with a bit of a retrospective. A year ago, at the March State Board of Education meeting, that was March third of twenty twenty-one, you recommended my nomination to Governor Lamont to serve as the acting commissioner of education. And five months later, you recommended my nomination to serve as your permanent commissioner of education. And what a year. Reflecting on the year, I remain humbled and proud to be leading our education system through these times. I've borrowed the title of the book that I think summarized this time of leadership and is leading without easy answers. Your Department of Education is working daily to support and keep our students' learning in person and also to keep our staff working in spaces that are as safe as possible. We've established, we've established investment priorities, so five priorities that are guided, the utilization of the one point seven billion dollars of Esther Fund. We successfully applied for our Esther funding from the U.S. Department of Education and you heard last month that our plan is just among a handful of plans that have been highlighted for our commitment to educational equity in the planning for the investment of those funds. We rapidly deployed the Connecticut Summer Enrichment Grants last year, that is now evaluated and informed this year's planning. We've served over a hundred and eighty thousand students and we met the goal of expanding access to summer programming for Connecticut students. We've established the groundbreaking research collaborative that you learned about last month and we're solidifying our best-in-class collaboration with our partners and our agencies, our sister agencies and our educational partners, and yes, we're giving students a voice for change. That is a really abbreviated short list of some of the things that we've done and none of this should be a surprise to you because we've also made sure that our monthly updates, even if we move this one a little bit long, that you're informed of everything that we're doing and we remain committed to continue to work directly with you. A few other things that you'll hear about later today is about our masking requirements that have changed and the support that we've provided and guidance to districts. You will hear about a remote learning standard that has been released. I'm sure you all know that I appeared before the Executive and Legislative Nomination Committee on February twenty-second and testified at the Public Health and Children's Committee to join here last week as well, and more to come for the rest of this week. Staff are working very hard to make sure that we're ready to do that. Yesterday, we attended a press conference with Governor Lamont regarding investments in indoor quality. Our board chair was there and gave remarks as well. And internally, we're looking to deepen our agency culture. We're also going to change it internally. I've mentioned to you that we know a hybrid workforce. We have a lot of longstanding staff members retiring from state service, so a lot happening. So we're working with the Council for Chief State School Officers, CCSO, to work with us internally to look at deepening our agency culture. So while we're working externally to make sure our schools, our districts, and our partners are all at the right frame of mind to support education, our staff must be as well and our agency must be to lead our education. This past week, I was honored to co-chair a conversation with the Lieutenant Governor and Black Women Leaders in Education. That is, I think, recorded and posted, we'll certainly make sure we send a copy of that to you. It was a great session talking with these women leaders in education. And finally, I participated in the Aspen Institute Congressional Education Staff Retreat. The Aspen Institute brings together some congressional staffers who are on the Education Committee and they wanted to hear from states in what happened around accountability and around assessment, and I was honored to be asked to represent Connecticut and to talk about the work that we're doing here. So thank you for your indulgence, we're a little bit longer on record today, but on behalf of the agency, just thank you for all your continued support and we look forward to working with the board as together we tackle the challenges presented by the pandemic and emerge even stronger. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Commissioner, thank you for accepting the call a year ago in the midst of a very challenging year. Your steady leadership has been essential in ensuring that our learning communities were safe and continuing to strive toward equity and excellence, so. We thank you. We do have important matters of business this morning. Our first item, I am five, six A, condition of education in Connecticut. Is there a motion on this matter? Second. Thank you. Ajit.
Chairperson, DeBois-Walton, Commissioner Russell Tucker, members of the State Board. It's a pleasure to be in front of you to share the condition of education report, an annual reporting requirement from the state legislature to report on the condition of education to the State Board. This pertains to the twenty twenty-one school year, so obviously we're well into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, but this pertains to the twenty twenty-one school year. I will go over some of the highlights that we learned. We've discussed portions of this at different points in time during our, during our year, but I'll do a brief summary and then open it up for questions. I don't have a formal hand presentation or anything, so. The, our student enrollment last year in twenty twenty-one declined substantially. It saw a three percent decline in one year, something we normally see over a five-year period, but we saw that in one year. And we've reported on this previously, that the biggest declines last year were in pre-kindergarten and kindergarten age groups. Those were the groups where students typically under the age of seven, which our state law allows parents to keep their kids and not have them attend school until they turn seven. So we saw big declines in those, in those age groups, in those, in those grades. Even though enrollment is lower, it continues to be a very diverse student population that is increasingly diverse. Last year, more than fifty percent of our students were non-white students, students of color. Students from Longmont Valley accounted for almost forty-three percent of our student population, sixteen, over sixteen percent students with disabilities and over eight percent are English learners. As with the student population, our educator demographics are also changing and last year in twenty twenty-one, ten percent of our certified educators that were educators of color. In this pandemic, as we, as we work our way through this pandemic, we've been committed to tracking student attendance much more closely than we used to in the past. You know that we have a monthly attendance collection in place that lets us know how students are attending, not just on their in-person days, but also on their remote days. And in twenty twenty-one, if you remember, districts operated in very different learning models. They switched from being in-person to going to hybrid, to remote, and back, and there's a lot of back and forth happening. Not only that, parents also had the choice last year to opt to be remote. So we made sure we tracked attendance really closely and what we learned really early on in the year is that attendance was obviously impacted. Our chronic absenteeism rate last year was nineteen percent, up from twelve percent, twelve point two percent the year before, so a substantial jump that we saw. And, you know, chronic absenteeism rates are too disproportionately among students of color or English learners and so on, and we know from our data that our students, our most vulnerable student populations tended to be more remote last year. So I think from that standpoint, coming back to in-person instruction this year has been a great leveler for, for many of our students. We know from our assessment data that we administered last year, just to recap, we did not administer state assessments in the spring of twenty twenty with the pandemic just hitting us. The old state barely administered state assessments in twenty twenty, in the spring of twenty twenty. States did administer their assessments in spring of twenty twenty-one, but it was not, there was no accountability for it, so districts did their best to assess students in person as much as possible. And what we learned from those data, it required a whole bunch of specialized analysis and I've discussed some of that with, with the board in smaller groups as well recently. What we learned is that students who learned in person, predominantly in person, lost the least ground academically. And we just, again, from sophisticated growth analysis over two-year periods to make that, to make that claim, why students in hybrid or remote learning models showed substantially weaker achievement and growth. And the largest impacts of this, of the pandemic were in mathematics. And again, that's not, while I say that, obviously I know that from Connecticut, we've also seen similar findings from, from other states and from national studies, but the impact of mathematics was substantially greater as well. We reported our graduation rate for the cohort of twenty twenty. What that means is that these are the students whose on-time graduation would have been August of twenty twenty. And that rate seemed to have held, you know, reaching up slightly. And that was as the seniors, you know, who basically went fully remote in March of twenty twenty, if you remember that time when we all went home, thinking we were coming back in two, two weeks. So, so that group, the graduation rate, didn't seem to have been impacted, but I just wanted to point out that we do track a measure called on-track high school graduation. We look to see how ninth graders are doing in terms of their credit accumulation toward graduation four years later, you know, in four years. And we saw that our on-track measure for the twenty twenty-one year was the lowest we've seen in the last seven years, so it was, it was a substantial decline. And the on-track indicator is a good predictor of graduation three years out. So we're, we know that there are more, you know, there are impacts that we still need to address in the, in the coming years as part of our recovery efforts. We also saw a decline in the percentage of eleventh and twelfth graders who need a college degree and bench warrant on an assessment like the SAT, which we give as a state exam as well, or the ACT, or the AP, or an IB measure. It went from forty-two point six percent in eighteen nineteen down to thirty-six percent in twenty twenty-one. The middle year, we didn't really have any decent data because we didn't have our state SATs, so students didn't, you know, didn't have to take it on their, on their own. So a six percent drop and we saw decline in, in all student groups, so it wasn't just limited to one student group. We also saw decline in college entrance rates. Again, I'm talking here about the graduating class of twenty twenty, enrolling in college any time in one year after graduation. And again, those numbers have been stable forever, at around seventy-two percent one year after graduation, and for the first time, we saw a, we saw a decline in that space as well. So, you know, we know we're not just hopefully coming out of this pandemic, but the, but clearly we have known from our data that in the twenty, the twenty twenty-one year was particularly challenging on a whole host of, you know, according to a whole host of indicators. We're hoping to, you know, working vigorously and hard to turn that curve in this year and in the coming years. So I'll pause with that and take any, any questions.
Thank you, Ajit, for that summary of the report. We all have a report, any questions? Yes.
Ajit, for the, the drop in college entrance, through the P twenty win reports that happen, will we be able to see whether or not any of that, any of those students get recaptured over the years? I'm trying to remember what sort of the cutoff of some of those reports are.
Yeah, I think the P twenty win report looks at, primarily looks at remediation rates. That's kind of the focus of that report and actually that analysis is happening now. We've received the data from, from our state university partners and from University of Connecticut. We're in the midst of analyzing that data. I think a better indicator likely would be the two-year college enrollment, meaning that, you know, high school graduates enrolling in college two years after high school graduation. I think there were probably a greater percentage of students who prevailed of the gap year, especially in this pandemic, so I think we'll be watching the two-year rate to see if there is a pickup in, in college enrollment.
Thank you. Karen.
Ajit, your remark that you made about the on-track ninth grade, the lowest we've seen in years, I guess I just wondered, I don't know if you can answer this question, but that, you know, those, both those students now are Southmorens. I'm just wondering how many districts are concentrating on that group of students? You know, we have this group of students that in March of twenty twenty were in eighth grade and left schooling at the most crucial point of the bridge to high school and then spent pretty much their whole year, their freshman year, not in a regular, so I'm just wondering how many, are you aware, like, I'm wondering about the fund, the Esther Fund, any of our districts are concentrating on that group of students to get them back on track?
I don't have the intervention, like, you know, what districts intervention-wise they're focusing on, but I'll tell you, say a couple of things, Commissioner, if you, if, or, you know, if you'd like to add, or. When we look at, and I'm going back to attendance here a little bit, because attendance is like the precursor indicator, you know, it's the early warning as well. like the precursor indicator, you know, it's the early warning as well. And in this pandemic, we have seen the biggest increases in absenteeism in ninth grade. And that doesn't surprise anyone, right? Like you mentioned, the transition is especially hard when you're not in person and you're not making those initial connections with your friends in the junior freshman year and in that transition time. So when when I think of all the interventions we're putting in place, whether it be through the LEAK home visitation program, more than all our investments, I would imagine that districts are absolutely paying really close attention to the students who are behind the eight ball, whether they might be repeating ninth grade. Now, that's another thing we'll be watching this year's data. We just actually collected the enrollment information. So what we're looking to see is the expect of grade nine repeaters increase this year because potentially some of those students didn't actually, and that happens every year. Every year, there are students who are not on track after grade nine for the first time. They start off the fall again in ninth grade, but quite often, when they get to spring, they're moved up to tenth grade so that they they kind of catch up on their credits and then move up. So we'll be watching that closely. So I don't know exactly if a particular district's targeting it, but I can tell you that all the data we've been putting out is pointing to those grades, and I'm sure districts are focusing on those students.
Thank you. All right. Yes.
Ajit, I noticed in the report that boys are really falling behind in a number of metrics, college admissions and other metrics. And is that recognized as an issue? Is anything being done to address that?
I I think, Mr. Ashley, the we see disproportionality with outcomes, engagement outcomes of of our boys in several different areas, and I would say in all those areas, efforts are happening. We see it with absenteeism. We see it with suspensions and expulsions. We see disproportionality with with males. We see it in identification for special education. I know it it and and college enrollment, and this is not new in college enrollment too, is we've been seeing this this type of effort, this type of disparity. And I would say, I mean, districts are aware and working on it, but I I probably not the person to point to the particular interventions on it, but.
I just wanted to add, and thank you for all the questions. And going back to the the data point allows us to have the conversations that we're having, which is really so telling, as Ajit mentioned, you know, when you look at the change in in our teaching workforce, our teaching force here, and the demographics changing, it is the data, right, that informed the action that was taken. This board in two thousand and sixteen challenged us to make sure that we were focused on diverse kind of educator workforce and not to be lost this change from eight percent to now at ten percent, that, you know, adding over fifteen hundred or so educators of color. Again, we're not doing the mixture of that, but the point is that the progress is being made, and it is allowing us to even be more focused and targeted in the areas that we're working in. As you talked about chronic absence, and we've talked to you here about the ten million dollar gear fund investment from the governor's office for the learner engagement attendance program. And right now, in the budget, not yet passed, is an additional thirteen million dollars that's there to continue to grow this program from the fifteen districts that it's already in. Again, you know, John can tell us more about that if folks have further questions, but we're talking about home visitors and going to homes, making connections, reconnecting our students, and that's why even the summer enrichment program was so important to start developing that culture again of attendance and being out. So that is really important because really, attendance is a precursor to engagement, which is a precursor to learning. And so it's the whole cycle that we continue to work on here together. The the investments, over seven hundred million of our SR funds are going towards the learner, the enrichment program, learning recovery. And so we've really had for districts, use the data to drive the strategies that they're working on. And we certainly have more details behind that that we can share, but really, they're really thoughtful about how they're deploying those funds for for this particular area of of work.
Thank you.
Ajit, you did a wonderful job, as usual, with this report. A lot of great information and a hard year to get it. It's greatly appreciated. I think the it just points out the difficulty of operating in a pandemic and the results of that. And, you know, there's a lot of muscle built up about, very quickly, about how to react to that and things put in place. I guess it's it's almost like you have to have some way to be able to to practice that. If you don't, then you lose some of that muscle that you've developed. So just a a suggestion is to think about how can we make sure that we're ready for the next thing like this? Maybe hopefully not, this is going to, hopefully, it's not going to happen, but it could. And if it does, you know, how do we as smoothly as possible move from where we are, fix the things that didn't work as well as you would like to have had them work, get more kids in class and in the room itself? Because you know, you found that that's one of the one of the major things that has made a huge difference for these kids. I know in in they were seeing it happen in the military. I know it happened in in healthcare. You always practice for the things that are bad, and you'd be surprised when you do that, sometimes they happen and you you're ready to, you're you're much more prepared for it. And because you've gone through the you've gone through some some drills in that case, so just something to think about. How do you how do you prepare for the next one and not lose all that? Because you get turnover in staff and all the variety of things. How do you lose all that's been learned by some practicing going forward?
If I might just, if I might respond to that, it's, I think the goal, our efforts in this pandemic and then coming out of it are really designed to come out of it stronger and better and not just back the way we were, you know what I mean? So I think I think some of these differences that we're seeing, to Mr. Ashley's question about the difference in male outcomes in certain cases, those were definitely during the pandemic too, right? So how do we how do we kind of use this time to to try out new things? And we are, we are trying out new things, new ways of engaging all students that such that school is a more, even more attractive and engaging place where students want to go and want to be and want to pursue their dreams more even more passionately than they were before. So I think the whole idea of reimagining our work is centered on that that premise, that we just don't want to go back to the way things were necessarily, because that wasn't necessarily the producing the best outcome either. So so we have a, you you know that we're, there is statute that allows for remote learning in grades nine through twelve next year. And, you know, we we hope that a tool like that can be a way that maybe engages some students who may not have had access to challenging courses, for example, and now all of a sudden, they can access some more courses remotely and and stay engaged with school and stay engaged with the learning. So I I think the whole, our whole efforts are around reimagining and coming out even stronger than we were before. And then potentially, that is what works for our students, all our students, our our boys, our students of color, students with disabilities, English learners, et cetera.
Thank you.
Just just one last point, because I really want to thank the team. I want to thank the the performance office for all their efforts around the data. Mr. Fray, you said that well, you know, being able to get the data, but also for our districts, because every time we do this, we ask them also to provide information to us. But not to be overlooked, the information that you have here about the impact of remote or hybrid and in person learning is the information that we've been using, because we we were fortunate enough to have that data in Connecticut. Don't please don't take it for granted that all states have this information that we have, atta- attentional learning model to assessments and how our students did. But this is the information that we've been sharing wide, you know, near and far with legislators and with others about how our our students did, and which is why we push so much for in person learning. So I really just want to thank the staff and our our districts for really kind of switching and making sure that they're doing this data collection, which is more timely, more more frequently than they normally do, so that we can have information to inform our efforts, not only strategies, but also to advocate to make sure kids are where they should learn best.
Thank you. Yes.
In that the five year plan that the commissioner mentioned, I believe the goal was to hire thirteen hundred features of color, and thirty percent of those were supposed to be men. And I think they actually hired, actually nineteen hundred were hired. Do we know how if we fulfilled the goal for men? Because that might relate to the underperformance of boys that we were talking about.
I I don't have the sense of the breakdown for gender on that. I'm sure we can share that information with you. But we did exceed the target that we set.
Right. By a big margin.
We certainly want to add our thanks to the commissioners, thanks to the team who works on this, and to the districts. We ready for the vote on this? Okay. Are we voting on this one? Oh, we can just do a all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Any votes? Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
All right. That I I think provided an important context as we move into the next matters, which are charter renewals, because part of the work that I know Ajit supported was the work that Lisa and Desi have done in looking at this and looking at performance of charters in the context of the last couple of years we've been in. So let's move to item sixteen, the renewal of State Charter for New Beginnings Family Academy in Bridgeport. Your motion?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us here to talk about charter renewals. Before we begin, I want to start with my thank you and acknowledgement. First and foremost, I want to thank the school. This has been a year trying time, and charter renewals typically are very comforting. They are very time consuming, they are a part of the process, but to do so during the pandemic has been quite a challenge. So I want to personally thank the charters, the six charters that are coming before us this month and next month, their staff, their family, the leadership, the students, and community members all throughout this time. In addition, I would like to thank our cross agency charter renewal team. This is a big lift, a year long lift, and we couldn't produce what you have before you had recommendations without them. So please bear with me just for a moment while I read the names to recognize and commend them. So first and foremost, thank you to the charter unit. We have Robert Kelly, Felicia Canetti, and Shakira Jacob Sackles. From the turnaround in our pandemic office, Dr. Adrian Wood, Part Paul Castigliano, Megan Alibey Bickley, and Bridget Tillman. From the Office of the Internal Audit, Tom McCarty, Robin Sumora, Justin Clary. From Legal, we have Lou Tanisco and Matt Benmore. From Talent, Sharon Fuller. The Bureau of Special Education, Andrea Verdoun. And lastly, to Ajit and his team for conducting the specialized analysis that you see before you. And then lastly, I want to thank you all as a state board. Thank you for presiding over the public hearing. Thank you for joining me on the site visit. To the Accountability and Support Committee, thank you for continuing to support this work moving forward. Okay, so now that we have our thank yous, we're going to begin with New Beginnings.
Good morning. The first school we bring before you this morning is New Beginnings Family Academy located in Bridgeport, Connecticut. They opened in two thousand and two and currently serve five hundred and two students, grades pre K through eighth. We're joined here today by New Beginnings Family Academy Board Chair, Donald Foley, and Executive Director, Ronell Swagerty. Over the past seven months, New Beginnings has appeared before the State Board Accountability and and Support Committee and also hold the site visit with State Board Vice Chair Aaron Bim and Division Director, Lisa Lamento. The department accepted the application for New Beginnings Family Academy renewal on November first of two thousand and twenty one. A public hearing took place on December fifteenth, presided over by Board Member Robert Fray. Forty six people attended of the eighteen who gave testimony, all were in support of the renewal for New Beginnings Family Academy.
So on December fourteenth, the CSDE conducted a renewal site visit, and the focus areas are aligned to the four performance indicators outlined in the toolkit and also in your report. During this visit, I had the pleasure of observing several classrooms myself. In particular, we had Miss Taylor's second grade classroom, in which they were comparing Alexander and the horrible, horrible, no good Barry Van Gundy to Benji and the bad day and me. And Miss Taylor was really doing an excellent job of encouraging students to talk to each other, turn and talk, to compare the story, compare to each other and to their lives. I also had the pleasure of meeting a good grade student named Jason that day, who shared with me how he was adding fractions using tutorial representations. And yes, he was using those words, tutorial representations. So this report that you have before you outlines the findings, including the school's strengths and areas for continued growth in both pre pandemic and during the pandemic. For New Beginnings, the suspension rate has remained low over a three year period. The chronic absenteeism remains low below the posted, and just about to see pre pandemic, but really slight during the pandemic's fifty four percent. In ELA, New Beginnings is experiencing substantial declines, which was in contrast to the pre pandemic period, when ELA increased substantially over a two year period. In math, while the amount of the time seemed pretty terrible to those that state, the achievement in two thousand and twenty one is low, between four and six percent with their hybrid and remote students. This is truly a tale to school for. So with that, we are going to present our recommendation to you for a three year renewal with the following conditions, to include bi monthly recording and corrective action to address attendance and academic performance. At this time, I am going to turn it over to Miss Virey and her Chair Foley to share a few words, and then over to you all.
Good morning. On behalf of New Beginnings Family Academy, we, Ronell Swagerty, NDFAs CEO, and I, Chair of Board, would like to express our appreciation to the State Department of Education and specifically the CSDE office for considering NDFAs' application for charter renewal and recertification. It turned out that was both an extensive and intensive review of our operations, staffing, practices, and performance. It was conducted under unusual and difficult conditions given the pandemic and consumed a great deal of resources from our staff as well as the team members of the CSDE, mainly Lisa Lamento, Felicia Canetti, Ron Kelly, and Shakira Jacob Sackles, for grateful for your review, your input, and your conclusions. I was asked to give you a perspective on the board's involvement with school. I can assure you, each board member can articulate NDFAs' vision and our unique EFL mission. They incentivize others to work toward achieving NDFAs' mission through their engagement and personal example, as they appear regularly during class time to read, tutor, and be involved with students. Secondly, along with the staff, the board reviews, analyzes, monitors students' academic performance, progress, and achievement. And as a nonprofit and public institution, we understand the special obligation of oversight utilizing NDFAs' human and financial resources in an efficient and effective method, while holding the appropriate parties accountable for the duties of care and achievement. All this being said, the last three academic years have truly been a tale of two schools. Three years ago, the board Three years ago, the Board took some satisfaction in stabilizing the school and staff. We saw a strong turnaround in academic performance, exceeding expectations, and state activities. We funded initiatives for teacher and staff development in language arts, mathematics, leadership skills, by employing a light of recognized learning, development consultants, mainly Bank Street and Menomorphans. We were even anticipating a bright future with lengthening wait lists during COVID. Unfortunately, prospects changed dramatically and quickly with the challenges presented by COVID in March two thousand and twenty. With a turn on a dime, the Board personally funded and purchased some five hundred Chromebooks to communicate and continue classroom education after coming to understand that some sixty percent of the Bridgeport student population did not have access to broadband and the internet. Realizing the difficulties associated with virtual learning and teaching and anticipating a drastic fall off in academic performance, the Board initiated a discussion with the leadership team about rightsizing the school so that it would appeal more to what we all perceive as the need to provide even that much more intensive language and math learning in the early grades of K through sixth grade, rather than diluting our efforts over a larger spectrum of the grade surveys. This initiative was approved by your offices, and we expect full implementation within two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four school year. Finally, NDFAs enjoys a group of long-term financial supporters who appreciate a schoolless institution. Understanding the challenges and educating the young during COVID are giving for us, seeing increased contributions from our loyal donors, and renewed giving from our last donors. Interestingly, we're not seeing a fall off in giving currently being seen by other charities. All this being said, I can't underplay the threat NDFAs' Board and leadership are dealing with right now. Quite frankly, with a loss, I'm sorry, with a less talented and dedicated team than what we enjoy at NDFAs, these threats would be considered fatal. Since the beginning of the academic year, we've lost too many teachers, eight alone over January and February. Most were teachers with ten, fifteen years' experience with NDFAs. The ones who took the school have invested much to teach training and development over the years. Despite contracts signed and commitments made, the pay differentials offered by the wealthier school districts of Fairfield and New Haven Counties were too significant to be ignored, as the older teachers recognized the impacts on future pension benefits. The salt in the wound for us is that we're at a loss in not being able to find qualified applicants and learning essentials in the market. We can't compete. We are not in any form on equal footing to what is normally offered by traditional district schools. The twenty percent underfunding by the state of the per-student reimbursement that is granted to traditional district schools is dramatically and negatively impacting our ability to serve our student population. So let me close on another note. For not unique in welcoming back to our classrooms over the last few months, students and families were deeply traumatized by their social isolating experiences during COVID. You remember that our NDFAs' mission is built around presets of emotional and social learning, which makes us uniquely qualified in state to deal with these incidents. In real time, we're seeing marked improvements in academic performance and far lower percentages over the last month. With your support and outreach, we aim not to have a lost generation among the students we're serving. Let me assure you, whatever your expectations or recommend corrections actions for NDFAs, our expectations are zero. I'd like to turn it over now to and now to amplify some of these things. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good morning, everyone. You said a lot, and thank you for that, because you did lay it out in context nicely. Let me start by saying good morning, congratulations to Chair Dr. Boyd Walton and Commissioner Russell Tucker. It makes me incredibly proud to be sitting here, looking at the two of you in your seats. And good morning to the Dean, Lady Board of Education, with whom we have come to know, and to the Turnaround Office team, the diversity charter team, that have worked with us for so long and so closely. We really, really appreciate you. Sometimes I think New Beginnings name would have been the Phoenix Academy, because here we are again, having thrived from the actions. But I have to tell you, I have no doubt that we will, just like we did before. COVID-nineteen has done a number, not just on New Beginnings, but on a lot of schools. And I know for a fact that we've got an incredibly talented instructional and leadership team in place, and we know how to turn academics around. My concern, which I share with Don and so many others, is around the teacher shortage. In August, a week before the school year started, while I was winding up my summer vacation, I received a call from a seventeen-year New Beginnings teacher, who I consider a friend, and she was crying. And I thought someone in her family had died. I started to name her kids. Is someone so okay? Is someone so okay? And she was crying because she had decided that she was leaving New Beginnings Family Academy after seventeen years, even though we had decided that we were going to make it a great school together. And she had made that difficult decision because Greenwich was paying her forty thousand dollars more, at forty thousand dollars more. And she had become a single parent, and she was concerned about her retirement benefits. The system is set up to incentivize people to go to the higher-paying districts so that their retirement benefits are greater. And once that teacher leader left, the floodgates opened, because now other teachers realized that they could go to Norwalk and make twenty or thirty thousand dollars more, Stratford and make twenty thousand dollars more. And like Don said, it's hard to compete. So we've had to ask ourselves hard questions. What are we going to do? We're a poor school, and there really shouldn't be any poor schools in Connecticut. But we're a poor school. So what are we going to do to bring those teachers back in? The teachers that left the suburbs, created these vacancies, and now the suburbs and school districts are taking the teachers that we've invested years and years into from us. So we're thinking outside of the box. We're leveraging relationships, relationships with Sacred Heart and Fairfield U and Quinney TACU and Bank Street College of Education. We're casting wider nets. We are talking and strategizing about establishing relationships with the HBCUs, the historically black colleges and universities. We are spending money that we never spent before, that we really can't afford to spend, but can't afford not to spend, to send our human resources personnel, all two of them, to attend job fairs outside of our state, and sparing some fruit. Just recently, we were able to hire a math tutor who used to be an intern with us in one of the programs, I think it was Fairfield U or Sacred Heart, one of them. And then just recently, we hired a reading tutor, who is a reading specialist who is coming to us from Chicago, highly qualified, but will have to help her get her certification, right? So we are looking at ways to address the teacher shortage, which is a really big concern of ours. It is. Attendance is a concern as well, as it is with you, and attendance, they all tie together, right? When you don't have teachers in the classroom, the behavior spikes. Parents are already traumatized from COVID. They haven't recovered from that trauma, by the way. I don't think many, very many of us have. I certainly haven't altogether. But our families, you know, when children are not, don't have teachers in front of the, in front of the classroom, they're not incentivized to send their children to school. And so we're having these conversations with our families, with whom we have really good relationships and have had for years. So yes, here we are again. But if you look at our data, you'll see that in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, we made a comeback, and we would certainly make another one. So I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Great. Thank you for being here, the presentation. Other question?
I have a good question.
Next chair.
Good morning. Hi, good to see you again.
You too.
I truly enjoyed my visit that.
That was fun.
It was a lot of fun. Just a couple, you know, I understand the teacher shortage. I understand that, you know, all our districts, many of our districts across Connecticut are dealing with that. And I know the Board Chair, you referenced on how you stepped up immediately when the pandemic with the Chromebooks and so forth. I'm wondering as far as with this teacher shortage, what has the Board done in particular to support New Beginnings with this teacher shortage? You know, have they addressed this? Have they done anything to also support it?
The answer is yes. I mean, clearly, our first line of defense on this is to support our leadership as they're, as they've progressed on some of the initiatives they're looking at. The fact is that we are now attending job fairs, which we never had to do, reaching out more to the universities that are in local neighborhoods who are supplying some tutors to us, some teachers and so forth. But also, the Board is actively involved in recruiting people as well. We've got, we've got positions in prior boards at other schools and so forth who are able, basically through their networks, basically to outreach to them to see if they know of candidates that might be available for us. We have a unique mission. It's not for everyone. We want to make sure that we're choosing what we think is going to be the best that fits in to teach, to help us with the teaching.
Do you use exit surveys at all when you're staffed?
Yes.
Right. Was it solely the salary was the reason?
Salary is the primary reason, and the secondary reason is benefit. And a close third is the trauma that comes into our building. I mean, it's not easy to, to work in an urban public school, especially a small one, right? Without a lot of resources. Chartered schools are tiny. We don't have layers of staff. We don't have curriculum specialists and, you know, reading this and math that. We don't have all of that. So we're tight and small, and what we hear from staff is that they know that they can go somewhere and make so much more and not have so much stress in their lives from the student population and from the, you know, and have more support from other school districts, right? From other staff members in, within the district, larger district.
I also have a, you know, as you know, we've been concerned about the chronic absenteeism, and that continues, and it took a big spike, as many schools did. But I wonder if you could talk to us a little about, maybe about what the root causes are, the reasons you think, was it a particular grade level that caused this spike?
No, not particularly. We saw it across all grades. We did see and still do see a lot of absenteeism in our pre-K, among our pre-K students, and that's a mindset thing, right? Those pre-K parents are looking at us as a daycare, and we're working on that. We need them at the door in the morning at ten, even though school started at seven-thirty. What are you doing here at ten? Right? So we continue to have those conversations with them. But it's not just the pre-K, and I don't want to just blame them. We've seen it across all grades where families just had not yet recovered from the hybrid model, you know? And if their, and if their children, they're just not bringing them to school enough, and we're having those difficult conversations with them. We're thinking hard, we're talking to them, we've had home visits with them, we've sent home letters, we've called, everything. We're doing lots of things. We're going to take a deeper dive, we're looking at the data, we're going to use some of the tools that the Turnaround Office is giving to us to try to address it in a different way. But it is concerning. I mean, it's inching down. Fifty-four was the high, that's horrendous. Now we're somewhere right forty-five, maybe, I don't know, but it's still terrible. We are working on it in a number of ways. So just know that we, I understand it's an issue, I agree with it, that it's an issue. Prior to the pandemic, we were at fourteen percent, which wasn't great, but it wasn't horrible, it wasn't worrisome. Now it's worrisome. So we're addressing it.
And then lastly, I know when I, during my visit, you were, gave me somewhat of an update on your early childhood center. Could you just update the Board a little bit on that?
Yes. That is my pride and joy, is keeping me going during this very difficult season. We are in the process of building a state-of-the-art early childhood center on campus. It is the reason why we, we applied for a material change request to save out our stuff in eighth grade. That project is moving along nicely. The decision has been made based on the assessment study, that we are going to go with a one level to begin with. The city of Bridgeport has just did some, made some new zoning changes that work in our favor, so we don't have to accommodate for a lot of parking. And so the architects are currently working on the drawing, and although I was hoping that we would break ground in March, we probably won't, but we do intend to break ground a little later in the summer so that we can have a school in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, yes.
I recall that you did a great job of building a diverse educational staff.
Yes.
And you should be commended on that.
Thank you.
And with the losing teachers, have you been able to maintain your diversity in the staff?
Oh, yes. We're still probably one of the most diverse schools in the state. We've got, you know, lots of brown, black and brown people floating around.
To the chair, what percent of Latino students did you have?
Oh, it's about thirty-six percent now. Yeah.
And out of all bilingual instruction, what would you say?
So we just finished our last link testing, and we have more English learners than New Beginnings has ever had in its history. We also have our first English language teacher, who we recently hired, so that's a bright light in this whole hiring situation. And so those students are being served now by someone who actually has the strategies in place to serve them. The number is about seventy, I want to say. Don't quote me on that, but it's higher than it's ever been at New Beginnings.
I too was concerned about that, too, what Eric has, that the chronic absenteeism.
Yes.
It's very concerned, as you should be. And so I, I'd like to hear from, what are, what are you putting in place? Because I know we're moving forward, and we have the confidence
Yes.
that the COVID is going to be behind us.
Right.
And that we don't allow ourselves to hold back against our children and families.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I mean, so what, what types of steps are you taking to help these families? Because you said you got families involved, and I know that, you know, they come in at different times, and it's time to set some protocols, some standards.
It is time to set, to take a stand.
Would you share some examples of what you're going to put in place so that we've got a better piece of
I, yes.
Concern that I have, most of us probably have.
I know. I know. I see your face. My face looks like that on most days, too.
Yes, when it comes to children and absenteeism, wow.
Children and absenteeism, right? Because, I mean, I think a few, few of us have said this morning how absenteeism speaks to engagement, speaks to outcomes, and we get it. So we've done, we have followed the state's protocols in terms of absenteeism. I've participated in some of those PDs. I've brought back some of those strategies. The, the letter writing, the phone calls, we've even done home visits in the middle of the pandemic. We have good, or have historically had great relationships with our families. So I meet our parents at the door, or I personally pick up the phone and I call them. On top of that, we have got to sit down and really start to scratch at the root causes. There are some small things that we have addressed recently, like who's in charge of taking attendance? Is it the teacher in the room, or is it the instructional assistant in the room? Do we have shared understanding about that? I've been looking at that data lately, and to be honest, sometimes we have teachers taking, being very thorough. P for present, D for whatever D stands for, I forget right now, T for tardy, for early dismissal is D. So P, D, and T, and then we have some attendance sheets that just have the T and the D. Well, why, where's the P? Right? So there's no, the inconsistency that I'm noticing needs to be addressed, because it's important that everybody in the building have that shared because it's important that everybody in the building have that shared understanding and that shared sense of urgency about how important attendance is, right? So little things and leading up to big things. The bigger things, quite frankly, I'm leaning on the turnaround office to help me with, like they've done in the past. There are protocols. There are system frameworks that they have, um, that Shakira and I have been talking about using. This hexagon tool, which I thought was a nightmare to begin with, but turned out to be a blessing. It's a good one, right? We, we're really using those tools to have these conversations and to look at the data deeply and to determine root causes and then next steps. So we're doing what we've been doing, and now we're starting to look into what else we can do to make it better. I don't have all the answers today. I just know we're going to fix it.
You may want to also, I, um, I ran for twenty years a K through twelve, uh, first gen, uh, diver- diverse program, getting students ready for college. Um, it's importantly that we also provide professional development for our parents and get them to be involved with other parents.
Yes.
Okay? Speak Spanish, speak Portuguese, because I see that your, your Portuguese, uh, community has, has grown. It's growing. I see that here. Um, involving those types of, uh, those, uh, skills that our parents have, those talents and gifts. And I've seen throughout the years with my experience that, uh, parents become the ownership of that, of that, that chronic absentee.
Exactly right. Parent buy-in is important.
Okay. So thank you. We have in front of us a recommendation for a three-year renewal, which I think recognizes the challenges that the school has faced and also confidence in their ability to, um, make the necessary changes and, and, uh, and, you know, to use your Phoenix analogy, to survive again. So, um, do you know other questions? Oh, yes, another question.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't get my hand up quickly enough. I'm struck by the, what's described as a very low achievement in fifth through eighth grade math. Very low strikes me as a very gentle way of putting it. What does it say here? What are you doing about that? Is, and, and, yeah, that's really a foundational skill for virtually everything but purely manual work and probably, or even manual work. How are you addressing that and why, why? Has it been this bad before, or is this a pandemic-influenced problem and, and why?
So math is, um, is, is interesting. Um, one thing we have done is invest a considerable amount of money in new resources, curricular programs and resources, um, for all grades, not just the upper grades. But there does seem to be a drop-off from fourth to fifth grade, and then the catching up of that tends to be, um, challenging. We are incorporating a lot of different programs. The children use Bridges Math. They use Multi-Max. Um, you know, we've, we've got tiered instruction. We're really looking at the numbers. They are troublesome. We had a very rough time in the beginning of the year. We lost every single middle school teacher in the beginning of the year. It was traumatic. Um, and so our kids lost weeks of instruction as we tried to rebuild that team. Um, and, and that team went to high schools, Bullet Havens and others, where they made a lot more money. Um, so yes, we recognize that those numbers are troubling. They're not as, we're seeing lots of growth. I mean, we just, we just finished our mid-year, um, assessments, and we are seeing growth within the performance bands, lots of it. Unfortunately, the benchmark keeps moving. That's how it works, and we haven't quite caught up yet. But we intend to accelerate. We're going to use the acceleration framework, and we intend to accelerate our learning for those kids. We would love to offer an after-school program. That was in my original, um, reopen plan, but we couldn't staff it. Back to that staffing issue, right? After-school program, programming would help. We were able to do a summer program, which did help. But the after-school program would help more.
Do you have an explanation for what happened in this round? Why, why those numbers are so bad now, or has that been a problem before as well?
Or is that a problem of what?
Has, was that a problem before as well?
So math has always been New Beginnings' weakest content area, right? We, we, we have mathophobic teachers, and we need professional development, and we've been, um, providing as much professional development in that, um, area as possible. We're working very closely. I think I mentioned it, Metamorphosis out of New York, we, and, you know, it comes in to work with our teachers and coach them. We need coaches. We need literacy coaches, and we need numeracy coaches because teachers need support. And if teachers don't feel comfortable with the content, they tend to spend more time on the content areas that they are comfortable. So we are seeing that. We are addressing it. Um, you know, and, and we've just got to keep pushing forward. It is low, though. I acknowledge that.
It's, it's, it's.
It's, it's a catastrophe. That's why we're Phoenix. We're going to rise from the ashes.
All right. And I, I do believe you've heard that you have the support of, uh, the turnaround office and the team on many of these items. Um, any other questions on, on this one? All right. Yes.
I'm sorry. Just really quickly, I, I, I just thank you personally. Thank you for, for coming in and, and pointing out, uh, and having the courage to do so. Uh, I, I just think it bears mentioning, um, to everyone here, not only this board, but everyone, that if in fact you are working in a community where, that is already struggling before the pandemic, and the struggle is now tripled down, it, it just makes sense that the school would struggle as well. So I think that narrative for me, when I, when I read this, even in terms of math, it, it all makes sense to me because I, I work in the same neighborhood that you work, with the same type of people. And so I just, I just wanted to say that. I think it's really important.
Thank you for that. All right. So thank you. We think, we appreciate you being here, um, and presenting, uh, the story. We look forward to watching you continue to rise. Uh, all of the favor of the motion on the floor for a three-year renewal?
Right.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, moving to item sixty, uh, the renewal of the state charter for the Integrated Day Charter School in Norwich. Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you. We welcome that team to the table.
Next, we bring forward, uh, charter renewal for Integrated Day Charter School in Norwich, Connecticut. We're joined by Integrated Day Board Chair Cheryl Blanchard and Executive Director Dr. Ellen Rattell. Integrated Day opened in nineteen ninety-seven, served three hundred and fifty three students, uh, in grade pre-K years. The department accepted an application, uh, for their renewal back on November first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, this public hearing was placed on November sixteenth. It was presided over by Amelia Stevie. Ninety-five people spoke. Of the forty, we had testimony all were in support of Integrated Day Charter Schools renewal.
So on December seventh, the IDCE team conducted a renewal site visit aligned with sports foreigner standards. During that visit, we began our day with a student-led tour with two A- grade graders proud to showcase the Integrated Day community. They literally, literally took us through the entire building, stopped outside of every classroom, and gave us the backstory of every teacher there. It was wonderful. Um, and they were really proud of their research and their model of their school, and government felt their research project all the way back to pre-K. Um, who their favorite teachers were, their favorite subjects, and how they supported each other at the school. Students assembling. In particular, I spoke to the middle school student and desk about the research project she was working on. She was researching Will Smith, and the rationale behind it was some of her friends were talking about Will Smith, and she was a bit hesitant about the things that they were saying, so she wanted to do the research herself, see if it was in fact true. And what she found out that was her child, and it was very similar to this. Um, so the charter renewal process has revealed that at Integrated Days, close suspension rates were below the host district's state averages over the three years. In terms of achievement, the special analysis shows that in spite of the pandemic, Integrated Day hybrid student increase three point three percentage points, um, in ELA, while the math decreased five point seven percentage, percentage points. While Integrated Days' chronic absenteeism remained low in pre-pandemic years in twenty twenty-one, it did increase to twelve point nine, which was, however, still below the host district and state average. As a result of the charter renewal process, we've been forward a recommendation for a five-year renewal. At this time, I'll just turn it over to the floor.
Good morning. Thank you, uh, to the State Board of Education and to the CSE for your review and consideration of our renewal request. Also, a thank you to the renewal team for attending our public hearing as well as various site visits. Uh, we appreciate your time and your thoughtful input. The board work, is fortunate to work closely with the administrative team and to address the fluid needs of the students at Integrated Day Charter School. Um, during the pandemic, the administration and the staff have pivoted at a moment's notice to address the needs, and we've been fortunate to be able to, uh, seamlessly carry on the education. So we really appreciate your consideration of our renewal request, and at this time, I'll pass it over to Dr. Rattell.
Good morning, State Board of Ed members, the CSE staff and attendees. My name is Ellen Rattell. This is my fourth year as the IDCS director. I am very proud to present, to represent the Integrated Day Charter School, along with my four colleagues, Cheryl Blanchard, Julia Cronin, Ally Martin, and Darrell Wilson, who you heard share their perspectives of IDCS earlier in this meeting. And also thank you for this opportunity to share. I would like to thank the CSE, CSE team who came to visit IDCS and got to know us beyond all those renewal documents, which, if you've seen them, they're monumental, particularly in preparing them. I would like to thank Rod Kelly and Felicia Canty for their support and guidance throughout the act accreditation process and their assistance and feedback during the years, previous years. And thanks to Lisa Lorenzo, Division Director, who attended our public hearing and visited IDCS during the site visit. We appreciate their commendations and recommendations. In fact, we have acted on all of the recommendations. We are working on the NIAC accreditation, expect to obtain it by the end of twenty twenty-two. Additionally, our business manager is close to finishing the IDCS financial procedures manual. Lastly, our media specialist has received a DSAP certification, and our Spanish teacher will be certified, a certified teacher in the near future. Now I would like to share some highlights about the Integrated Day Charter School. I have three themes that I'll share. Progressing while preserving the core tenants. This is our twenty-fifth year celebration, and for all twenty-five years, we have been committed and faithful to our core tenants. Research, you've heard that mentioned a couple of times now. The first core tenant is research. Starting in pre-K, all students present three research topics during the school year. They choose the topic by guiding questions, investigate the topic, then present the topic to their classmates. Math, language arts, social studies or science, and social studies or science needs to be integrated into their project. All this work results in a poster board with lots of information which students present to their class. Their parents, siblings, and other family members are invited to watch the presentation. At times, there may be four to five guests in a classroom for a research presentation. During COVID, um, and I, I'll go to that in a minute. The topics vary. Kindergarten children research animals, while our seventh and eighth graders may investigate gun control. By eighth grade, if students attended IDCS since pre-K, they have presented thirty-two to thirty-three research projects when they graduate. It makes a difference when our students go to high school. Teachers from NFA always comment that they know who the charter school students are. Our graduates are poised and confident when they speak in front of groups. They produce high-quality work. In fact, last year, three of our graduates were taught academically at NFA in the freshman year, the sophomore year, and the, in the senior year. Integration. Our school is diverse. Fifty-four percent of our students are students of color, and forty-six percent are Caucasian students. We do have several students from the Mohegan Tribe also attending our school. We reflect the local community. More importantly, IDCS is an example that integration works. The students are friends across many groups racially, ethnically, socio-economically, and religion. Also, our learning buddy activity, which matches older students with younger students and enables students to get to know their students across, their classmates across, um, different ages. Our all-school, which is our weekly gathering of all students, features students presenting their learning to the school. This is another avenue for students to get to know each other. Right now, we have small school instead of all schools, so we have, um, three or four classes in the gym at one time, and they do the same thing. So it's, it's really exciting for the kids. The second theme, high expectations for students' learning as well as teacher instruction. As we all know, during the past two years, COVID has upended education. At IDCS, pivotability is the word I would use to describe our students, teachers, staff, and families. Closing down the school in March twenty twenty, and moving from hybrid to closing to opening to hybrid to all students attending school has been challenging, to say the least. No one was ready for the pandemic. However, IDCS teachers, staff, students, and families pivoted through the pandemic as we switched, squirmed, and swiveled. Throughout the pandemic, the teachers had high expectations and continued to press forward to ensure that our students receive the best instruction possible, both online and in person. I'm sorry. I, when I look up, I, I lost my place. Also, our parents were instrumental in our students' success. They provided online tutoring as well as calling students to support and help them throughout the pandemic. And yes, the students completed their research projects, whether they were remote or at school. The research projects were posted in Google Classroom, so all students could watch them and provide feedback. Speaking of research, although IDCS students have been completing and presenting research projects for twenty-five years, last year, the teachers reviewed, revised, and updated the rubric for all grade levels. This work was completed at the end of last school year. IDCS teachers hold themselves to a high standard. Like other students across Connecticut, our students lost instructional time during the pandemic. IDCS Assistant Director and Reading Interventionist are instructional leaders. To make sure IDCS students are meeting grade-level expectations, we hired four tutors to help our students in kindergarten to grade six, bridge that learning gap. For students in our middle school, we have very success, a very successful all-along homework club after school from Monday through Thursday. Three of our seventh and eighth grade teachers teach those students after school, and we have a parent who also helps. We have already seen a lot of academic growth amongst our students this year. IDCS administrators administer the I-RAY assessment three times a year and completes reading assessments for students pre-K to grade five. Based on these assessments, students in grade two to eight have enjoyed significant academic growth this year. We expect our students to perform well. This is, this is a prediction. I, I think Mrs. Cronin behind me still, she'll be listening to this. On the S, perform well on this year's S back. To support our kindergarten-grade one students who actually, um, had the most, um, suffered the most during the pandemic, we have added additional language arts, math, and math support in each classroom. Our high expectations for students is demonstrated in every classroom, every single deck. Who knows? Debbie Allen and I, the Assistant Director, visit classrooms every single day. Unity and community is the last theme I will share, and I'll have a few examples. On the first day of every school year, and this has been happening for years, we hand out flowers to our students. The flowers represent each student's uniqueness. When the children arrive in the class with the flower, they put the flowers in a vase to represent their class community. At the beginning of this school year, the playground was flooded, and actually, it was a good example of erosion. Uh, one of the fourth, fifth grade teachers brought the kids out to analyze it. The wood chips were washed away, and we had little mountains of wood chips and valleys all around the playground. Would have taken hours and several days for our custodian and staff to repair. When we asked the school community to help, more than fifty staff, families, and students arrived on Saturday morning to repair the damage. The children were able to play on the playground the following Monday. Although I have painted an almost perfect school, some of our students obviously can misbehave. Um, Parker, our head custodian, had some of those eighth grade students help him around the building. building. This has given them someone to look up to, a role model. Also, one of our kindergarten students helps Mr. Parker do his rounds in the building. He carries the garbage bag in his back pocket and comes into the different rooms to help out. Mr. Parker is twenty-six and cool and it's really important for our kids to see that. This year was the first time our student council could meet in several years. Student empowerment is a core tenet. The co-presidents came to my office early in the school year and asked if they could meet once a week instead of every other week. They enthusiastically and passionately shared that there was a lot of work to do in the school. The student council has hard at work. They have designed a gratitude tree that turned into a kindness tree. They have led a design for T-shirts for Kindness Day and our 25th celebration. And they've identified several learning, service learning projects for the whole school. IDCS is distinctive. We offer our families a unique experience. We are very proud of our school.
Thank you for allowing us to share and I will take questions.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us and sharing about your school. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a pivotability from you. I have a question.
Actually, in the dictionary, I just read.
I also checked. It's not your word. We just have a comment, really. I've always, when we've come before, the Accountability and Support Committee always found that research project such fascinating. So please let Lisa know when your showcase is in the spring.
Yes.
The board, so the board can be.
May fourth and fifth.
May fourth and fifth.
Yes.
Okay. Five thirty. I think it's just a wonderful program.
It is, and we have over, the last time we did it, we're hoping the same thing happens this year. We've had over two hundred and fifty people come and see it and even people who are connected to the school, parents who want to see and come into the school and visit.
Yeah, I can imagine. I'm sure it's a very good role, a real good model for many districts in the state to look at.
Ms. Chair.
Wilda.
Ellen. Hi, Wilda. It's nice to see you.
You too.
Yes, I recognize your work at IDCS, too. The question is, there was a public hearing and nobody seemed to, I saw Maria was there, right? And I was reading that. But, and I noticed that nobody, you know, there was no concerns about, any objections about the school. So my question is, how about your, your, your attendance for, for your students?
Well, our attendance was very good before the pandemic and it did, we did experience a higher absentee rate. However, the board and I, the administration, did monitor it and we're back up to ninety-six percent. So since the end of January, we're ninety-six, ninety-seven percent. I think part of the issue is, or one of the issues is if you, I think you all know this, if there's contact tracing and the family is out, then sometimes those, those days multiply to additional days. And I'll give you an example, and I know it's only one example, but we had one family who, I think dad got COVID and then passed, the kids were up for ten days and then five days later, mom got COVID and then the kids were out for an additional five days and then each child had COVID and it ended up that the children were out for almost twenty days.
Wow.
And so that type of situation happened, you know, I'm not gonna say frequently, but that would be an example of what happened in terms of our absenteeism. But it has come back and we do have a really strong system in place. The receptionist calls all the families who don't arrive. The executive assistant checks everything, anything that's, anyone who hasn't come in for two or three days, the social worker either sends an email or calls. We have all our letters in order, so I really think that that was just a blip because of what COVID caused rather than our, our families missing out on school.
Yes. And we thank you for the work you all do.
Thank you.
So we have in front of us a recommendation for a five-year renewal. Eric?
No questions?
Just a comment. I think, again, I'm just so very passionate about this and especially the issue of absenteeism. And this has been my experience, especially with the school that went before, before you. It's been my experience that COVID, not only did, did parents get COVID, but a lot of the families, and I would bet with, with, this is the case with A New Beginning, a lot of the kids had to stay home to watch their younger siblings.
That's also true. Yes.
And I think that's really important for folks to know because that is a fact. And those younger siblings usually go to another school.
Yes, that's true for our families, too.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to bring that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for highlighting that point as well. The recommendation is for our five-year renewal for Integrated Day Charter. We thank you for being here. We thank the guests that came as well to speak on behalf of the school. Ready for the vote? All of the paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And we'll move to item six. Renewal of the State Charter for Side-by-Side Charter School in Norwalk. Is there a motion? Second? Thank you. We welcome to the table.
Finally, we have a side-by-side charter school with us located in Norwalk, Connecticut. We have Board Chair Larry Cattaro, Executive Director Matt Midley with us. A side-by-side opened in nineteen ninety-seven, serves two hundred and thirty-five students in grades pre-K through eight. On September twenty-third, we moved to the site, they moved to the site visit with my chair, Aaron Vinton, and Lisa Lorenzo. We accepted their application for renewal back on November first of 2021. And a public hearing was placed on November ninth that will preside over by Board Member Eric Clemmons. Forty-five people attended of the nineteen who gave testimony all were in support of the side-by-side charter renewal. The department received letter of support, supporting renewal from the Norwalk Superintendent, Dr. Estrella, Mayor Riedling, and then Majority Leader Bob Duff.
On December first, the team conducted a renewal visit, which I was able to get into many classrooms. I observed Ms. Palmer's second grade class where they were all being on the road in an activity where they had to action fossils in the museum. And they were really excited because later in the day, they were going to create models using plaster of those fossils as well. So they were, they wanted me to definitely come back to them. Also, have the opportunity to join the student leadership, excuse me, student leadership focus group, which was comprised of students in grade six through eight. They had shared that side-by-side is family. Everyone knows each other and it was really important for everyone to feel connected and they saw it as their mission as a part of their school to do that as well. The charter renewal process at the time revealed that schools' suspension rates are below the whole district and state averages over the past three years. Last time I signed my absenteeism, remained low in pre-pandemic years. In 2021, it did increase to twenty-one percent, which was similar to what was seen statewide. In terms of achievement, special analysis showed that in spite of the pandemic, side-by-side increased slightly to forty-three point four percent in ELA and MAP increased seven point ninety percent to forty-three point four. As a result of the charter renewal process, we bring forward to you a recommendation for five years.
Thank you. Good evening, good afternoon, members of the board. Good morning, still, I guess. Before I get into my remarks, I want to thank you not only for hearing us out, everybody out today, but all of you for what you've done during these incredibly difficult, challenging times, what you've done for educators and students throughout the state. It is so good for Canadian citizens to know that we have a body such as yours that's looking out for our most valuable resource. On my way up here today, I had a phone call with Matt as we were both traveling in separate cars and realized it is twenty-five years, twenty-five years since I've had the privilege of being associated in one way or another with side-by-side school. I did so initially as a legislator who helped write the charter school legislation back in nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six, and then as an attorney who helped the founding members establish the school in St. Joseph's, the former St. Joseph's Elementary School in Norwalk, Connecticut. I served on the board for five years and was involved as their attorney throughout negotiating leases, et cetera, and came back to the board after a twelve-year hiatus where I serve there now. I mention that, not that anyone gives a darn about my resume, but more importantly, the thrill that I had and the unique opportunity I had to witness something grow over a twenty-five year period, to watch it grow in reputation, in excellence, in the ways it's touched people throughout the community. During these last two years, we found ourselves at our worst circumstance and it was in those two years that I'm most proud because the staff and the community of side-by-side was at its best. And we, in spite of the challenges of the pandemic, were still able to maintain a high level of educational excellence and that is much to do with the relationship we will hear from in the community. As far as the board's, an excellent rapport with the administration, obviously we have our parent members of the board, our faculty, staff members of the board that are always in great communication and keep us community members involved in the day-to-day. I, as chairman, have always had a great relationship with the executive director and certainly with Matt, so we are on top of all those things that are going on in the school. I won't waste any more of your time other than, again, to say thank you. Maybe consider a citation and turn it over to Matt.
Thank you. Similar to what Larry said, I want to thank everyone for having us here today as State Board. And I do want to mention a little of the team from the Department of Education. This is my fourth renewal that I've been through and I cannot handle a team before where there's just such responsiveness. At a small, independent charter school, it's really important to us, we don't have big departments or many layers, similar to what Ron and I all said. So very often I'll have to rely on emailing and calling many of the representatives that are here today. And I do want to make sure that the state board knows where, how responsive they are. Our success would not happen without that. I really just wanted to make note about some of what I feel to be the strengths of side-by-side. And one of the things that I think about is, now that we've been around for a long enough period of time, we have, or had prior to the pandemic years, we had this, what became a tradition where we would invite back graduates from the school who had now gone on to not yet high school or middle school. And because of these relationships that we built when they did attend school with side-by-side for elementary and middle school, it's not out of the question that we would stay in the education with our graduates. We'd invite them back and we would hold, just before we would do our lottery and adaptations for enrollment, we would invite the community into the school and we would have this panel of best graduate students, where they would just simply ask and answer any questions about, you know, what was why, why had you attended a school like this, a lot smaller than many traditional programs, what were strengths, what were weaknesses, et cetera. And I always recall this commenting that news here and I so believe that he said the same thing and referenced what she was told her, which is, it really is like family. It is, it is a small, tiny community atmosphere where the two hundred and thirty-five students were only one section at every grade level. So you can imagine that our eighth grade class, most of those twenty-four students have been there since preschool. They're in that same cohort, same classroom, and there are twenty-three other peers, dang it, dead out from preschool up to way grade. It has its pros and cons, it's a lot like siblings, but by far those pros definitely have ways of coming. And that really is, that's the, the key to most of our successes, you know, those relationships that we build. There's a lot of shared decision-making. I, I often will tell anyone who asks, you know, I'll, I'll often be the one who will be credited to a lot of the accomplishments, but I'm just the one that's at the base of the school for events like this, where it's really the staff and the faculty that we have and their commitment and their dedication that has made, led to us thriving for those twenty-five years. So I definitely welcome any, any questions or comments.
Thank you for, thank you for being here with us. Board, we have a recommendation for a five-year renewal in front of us. Other questions? Yeah?
I just have one that I'm asking because I didn't understand the reference. It says, "A review of the board of the school's special education program determined that it does not meet the requirements of least restrictive environment. School administration is working with the districts of residence to work that out." I guess, I know generally what least restrictive environment means, but how, what's the relationship and the role of the districts of residence with regard to how students in their school are present?
Sure. Well, I, as far as the relationship, I think, and I've been in the charter school landscape in Connecticut for a while, it's definitely one of our strengths. I've built some really strong relationships with the district of Norwalk in particular, their special ed department, based on how special education works in the charter school. That's definitely necessary. As far as the comments regarding least restrictive environment, I think where that came from was there was legitimate concern noted by the committee. Based on some discussion with our special ed staff, something that came up was how difficult it can be when you have, you know, a caseload that does reflect the necessity of not having that large of a special ed staff, right, with two hundred and thirty-five students. But what was noted was the, the grade span for those requiring that assistance stands to nine grade levels and you have one person using that. Schedules can often be a, a very difficult barrier to overcome. With that said, I want to make it very clear to everyone in here, not only as an educator but as a parent, as a special needs child, at no time does schedule ever play a role in determining what sort of resources would be made available to a child. We do have many kids with specific reading disabilities, in which case it does require some lab instruction. But as far as LRE, ZR, we do emphasize that we want to see it take place in the classroom as much as possible. We did take those recommendations from the committee very seriously and, and since then, we were very fortunate to hire one additional paraprofessional to assist with some of that specialized instruction and keep those kids in the classroom as much as possible. And we've also reallocated a, an existing paraprofessional to help their school.
Thank you. And on the other part of my question, I guess I'm still, still learning things after all these years. What is the role of the local district with regard to students in your school?
So it's, it's a shared responsibility is the best way to describe it, where much of the fiscal responsibility we need with the host district where a child lives, whereas the implementation of the services and PPT reside with the charter school itself. So it is a collaborative effort where it definitely benefits a school that's been around for a while and having that relationship. So we will very often, the PPT for any children attending side-by-side or any other charter school will consist of representatives from the district, child's family, and from the charter school and will work together to determine what, you know, resources can be used and what that program will look like.
Thank you. That is a lot of that.
Ms. Chair, the eight point three percent of the, of the staff that is not certified.
So.
Can you provide?
I, I.
May I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you provide us with, are those teachers still retained? Are they still uncertified? Is your, or you have a plan to help them with development in terms of, I know you're working with the CSE DS, but can you give us more in terms of the retention of those teachers? Are they still there?
Sure.
Because, you know, I would be concerned if they, they're not certified, they're gone and you have to start, you know, recruiting and identifying more teachers. So can you give us a little bit of that background?
Yes.
Thank you. That was my question.
Okay. First, I, to give some history, certain. Um, first, I, to to give some history, um, certification of our staff has been a strong point in our, um, since our inception, I believe we've always been at a hundred percent. We we work in a collaborative partnership that we have with Prince Academy, so we are very strongly supportive of the traditional route to being certified and having highly qualified teachers in our classrooms. This year, um, I I know this is a common theme hearing, as a result of the pandemic, um, we too, similar to what we began, at the start of this school year, we found out that one of our specialists on the area of art was not returning. Finding part-time certified teachers in special areas, especially foreign language, art, music, really difficult during our our normal times, if you will, it's been even more difficult now. We found a great art teacher, she's a certified elementary teacher, she'd been teaching art for twenty years in private school, so she did not have the um, the certification. Only thing I was missing was a practice test, which we were working with her on getting that settled. I wish I had better ending to this story, unfortunately, um, very recently, due to some concerns related to the pandemic, uh, that teacher is no longer with us. So it's, on one hand, it's no longer a certification issue, on the other hand, um, when I leave here today, the top of my list is is searching for a new certified art teacher. The the second half of that is only one, one point five teachers who weren't certified. The second half of that is our phys ed teacher. Um, traditionally, you see most phys ed teachers are cross endorsed for phys ed and health, ours is not. Um, I am working with him right now, looking at some programs to uh, attain that health certification as well.
Thank you, thank you for uh, the question.
Uh, yes, just a, just a, out of curiosity, we're allowed to bring out of state teachers, right? Is that, is that a way of?
Well, look at you.
Uh, my, the question is, are we, are we?
You're smart.
Oh, yes, um, I think that that you heard the question.
Yes.
Yes, but okay, the question is, I'm looking at uh, bringing uh, out outside, out of, out of the state teachers, right? Because I, as we recruit students into coming in international, is is that something that that can be looked at?
It it does. My understanding with the certification office is that we do want to see Connecticut certification in here. Typically, the background and credits that someone would have out of state makes that process a lot easier, um, and I I believe there there's several different directions you can go to get a a short-term, durational um, certification, a long-term self-certification, which can buy you some time to get that Connecticut license.
Okay, thank you for that information.
Okay. So we have a board, a recommendation for a five-year renewal for Side by Side Charter School. Seeing no further questions, follows the paper. Any opposed? That motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Okay, um, I do have a few um, members that want to raise a report of the chair, um, and it is an honor to assume the chair role as the board's head, and to have a gavel passed to me from someone who started with such distinction and provided stable and such familiarity and longevity and leadership. I see that as a gift, and I want to take a moment to thank Alan Taylor, um, and I want to also thank Alan for his service as chair, and appreciate his, appreciating his continued service on the board, but thank you, Alan. Um, and in taking on the leadership role, I'm bolstered by the strength and commitment of each of you fellow board members, the expertise and dedication of our commissioner, our deputy commissioner, the entire team at S B, uh, together guided by the best uh, education policy, informed by an engaged public, and forever focused on what's best for our learners, will continue to progress for excellence and equity. I'll bring to this role my background as a child psychologist, my background in public sector policy and administration, and my decades of executive leadership in creating equitable communities, and together we will support the S B's efforts to ensure that every learner receives excellence in education and recognizes the needs of the whole child. We're still in the midst of the disruptions and interruptions that a global pandemic has brought, and yet we refuse to let that take our eye off the ball around equity and excellence. I'm excited to move this work forward with each of you, and look forward to the opportunity to meet with each of our committee chairs as we chart our agenda moving forward. Now, this engagement board has been very busy the past month, uh, by Chair Benham, who attended the educator evaluation and support committee meeting, uh, on February ninth, board member Don Harris provided over the public hearing for the explorations charter school in Winston. I, as mentioned by our commissioner, joined Governor Ramon and our commissioner in Weatherfield. Yesterday, at the Hamlin School, had an announcement of the governor's new grant program investing in uh, in air quality and climate, um, in our schools. Additionally, the work of the Connecticut Remote Learning Commission is continuing as we try to support feasibility and create type recommendations around Connecticut statewide remote learning academies. Later this month, several board members will travel to D C for the NASB legislative conference. Um, I also want to mention, um, that it will be hard to fill the shoes of our current board members, but it is time for our student board member recruitment, and that application is open currently. The submission deadline is March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, and please all help us disseminate that information. Um, now, those who know me, I don't collect their quotes, and so you'll probably get lots of quotes from me as I stand this chair, so I'm going to close my chair report with a quote that spoke to me, which is actually an African proverb. It says, "We desire to equate two things to our children. The first is roots, the other is wings." May the actions of this board provide our learners with the necessary roots and wings from which they may have the foundation they need and continue to soar." With that, um, I do want to acknowledge that we have guests, and with the indulgence of this board, I'd ask that we move item ten to item ten A, so that we can respect the time of our guests who have joined us. Uh, so if everybody's all right with that, we will hear from our guest, Betty Sternberg, no, no stranger to this room, on the Teacher Leader Fellowship Academy presentation.
John, could you just check? I think they're maybe in the next room. Yeah. Can you cut that down?
She's on her way.
Thank you.
It's gonna be, it's only cooling out. It's not working. I have to maybe add in half cost.
Hi. Okay, I love these. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome, we're happy to have you here, and happy to hear about the Teacher Leader
You ready for us?
Yes.
She's getting her part-time booted up, but she should be there shortly.
Oh, okay, let me uh, get the right glasses.
Unfortunately, the screen on this side isn't working, so if you're over there, you may want to come over here to see the screen.
I thought I would put something wrong.
Oh, okay, I guess you couldn't be over there.
Oh, it's working now, there we go. Oh, well.
Okay, I, it looks like we're ready. Uh, first of all, thank you very much for for inviting us. I want to thank Charlene Russell Tucker, who uh, came to our first meeting, ran up to me and said, "Do you think we all could uh, talk to the state board? This is something they need to hear." So, uh, appreciate that invite, appreciate that you have us on your agenda. Uh, this is a very important topic, and I'd like to set it uh, in place in context with policy, like why would the state board be interested in this at any rate? So, uh, next slide, please. I am, uh, first of all, want to say, fo- focus on our mission, which is very simply put, to support teachers as leaders, and to support the administrators who are already there in creating a climate and culture that enables teachers as leaders. Now, why teacher leadership? Why is this important? What do we, put this in a context, how do we put this in a context of policy? And I want to do that for you first. Next slide. So, back in nineteen eighty, when I was first hired as the Bureau Chief of Curriculum and Instruction and Staff Development by the then Commissioner Mark Shedd, uh, he hired me to do two things. One is, believe it or not, back then, we had no curriculum at all from the State Department. It's it's amazing to think of that, but there was nothing there. And he knew from his colleagues around the nation that the issue of attracting and retaining high-quality teachers was one that was front and center for the nation. Some of you may recall back then that there were lead articles in Time Magazine, uh, in Newsweek that talked about teachers leaving and that the the ones who were staying were incapable of even writing a correct sentence. And so there was a focus, and he asked uh, us to head uh, and convene seven different committees around the notion of how to attract and retain high-quality teachers. Well, of course, that has remained, um, something that is crucially important, especially now after the pandemic, when I'm sure many of you have heard, and you've heard from charter schools, you hear that from our reg-, our 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 state schools, our regular schools, that people are, especially now, thinking of jumping out. Um, and how, how do you create the situation where we can continue attract and and uh, and retain high-quality teachers? So, I do want to focus on a couple of things. Back then, when we got started with this, we actually, the department commissioned research that was done by Mark Lynn and Dennis Turk of Yale. It's, it's published, it was published, uh, back in the Journal of Educational Research. And what did they show? Certainly, this is right in the abstract, quoted from it, "Certain commonly cited work problems, such as inadequate salary and low status, were found to be important in predicting job stress. Results further suggested that the role teachers perceived for themselves and school climate, particularly in relationship with administrators, may be extremely important in predicting job stress." By the way, there were many other uh, studies answered, which essentially showed, by the way, that more than anything, one's status and one's sense of efficacy was more important, even more important than, rank more important than the actual salary of of folks. So, the department, uh, really convened these committees, committees made recommendations, and actually, all of that resulted, that activity between nineteen eighty and then finally in eighty-six resulted in the Education Enhancement Act being passed by the General Assembly. But what you will note about that act, interestingly enough, is we heavily focused and put a lot of resources on changing requirements, on adding testing, on changing certification, on uh, really upfront creating a beginning educator support and training program, which was extremely important. But the, the focus was there as opposed to really thinking through the notion of people who are in the field, other than saying, oh, we're going to ask them to to have some credits, um, which, by the way, then got dropped, uh, where they, where they did ongoing professional development and required some C E U's uh, for professional development. So, in that context, let me move to the next slide, um, and tell you that at the same time, jump the slide and go to the next one, please, first. Um, there was lots of research going on in the early years of this new decade around teacher leadership. And there was really a seminal piece of research and others that came after it, but in twenty-seventeen, Richard Ingersoll, who was the Consortium for Policy and Ed Research, out of University of Pennsylvania, um, and Pat Dotteri and, uh, Docerty, and uh, out of the Teacher Center, uh, and Phil, uh, Serendos of the Consortium, cri- essentially did a very detailed research project on uh, on um, teacher leadership. And those three items are the most important things to think about. That one, students perform better in schools with the highest level of instructional and teacher leadership. There's actual data to show that. Also very important is that the specific elements of instructional leadership are strongly related to higher student achievement, essentially fostering a shared vision of the school, and I'll emphasize, shared, not, not a top-down, someone else tells you what this vision should be, but a collaboratively put-together vision of the school. Um, and providing a effective school improvement team and holding teachers to high instructional standards, that in in a way, no surprise that these are the things that are correlated with higher student achievement. And most, right, the third element, teach, when teachers are involved in decision-making processes related to school improvement planning and student conduct policies, students learn more. So again, not the notion of someone else creates a policy and then tells teachers to implement it. This is, these are the kinds of things that really need to be done collaboratively in order to, uh, in 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 order to see a higher level of student achievement. Now go back to that previous slide. Um, I want to say that many, uh, many entities worked on the notion of uh, of putting down a series of teacher leadership competencies. And at one point, the N E A, with the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards, and and with the Center for Teaching Quality in twenty eighteen, and by the way, other organizations, then and immediately after, put together lists, thoughtful lists, of what teacher competencies are we trying to look at? And you will see that there are five main areas in this one, and by the way, if you Google this, you'll find more current ones, but essentially, they all focus on the five areas. A real upfront focus on diversity, equity, and cultural competence, that teacher leaders explore and challenge this, and collaborate purposely around this, and cultivate social justice learning environment. Instructional leadership, certainly, um, coaching and mentoring and collaborative relationships, and involving the community. Policy leadership, overarching competencies around reflective practice and personal effectiveness and so on, and association leadership. These are really essentially the five main areas that are of importance, and not that any individual teacher needs to have all of this, but that parts of this are appropriate to individual teachers, um, uh, are, 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 what is important to the fabric of becoming an educational leader. And really, the notion that, and this is in- and this is in your, in the folder that we put out to you, the notion that every classroom teacher has it within them, not only to be a leader of their individual students in their class and enable their individual students in their class to be leaders themselves, but also has an interest in affecting their colleagues, the policies, their district, and how it operates. So if you move forward to, now the next slide. I want to give you a sense that back in 2016, 2017, we pulled together a set of superintendents and their assistants who are teachers and asked them, "What could we do to support them in enabling teachers, classroom teachers, to be real teacher leaders?" Over the course of the years, between then and now, 23 different school districts have been in this program. Some of them for a year, some for two years, some for all six years. And by the way, over 500 people, teachers have been involved in this program one way or the other over the course of these years, including our own technical schools. Next slide, please. So what did we do about this? Was there a standard? Did me, did I and a few people sit down and concoct what to do around this? We always collaborated with the folks who were in the program to think through exactly what we were going to offer to folks as they came. And really, the notion was that these would be, that these folks would be presented in really things that would spark their imagination to think about how they could be truly creative and innovative and collaborative within the context of their schools and their communities and their school districts. So essentially, over the years, we've been doing seminars over the course of the year. And by the way, I want to mention these folks from these school districts come not paid, on their own time. We usually meet from, I want to talk about pre-pandemic and then pandemic. We used to actually meet physically, face-to-face, from four to seven o'clock on these seminars. And we would bring in folks who could spark their imagination around topics that these folks were interested in. We had summer workshops on areas that these folks were interested in. By the way, some of you around the table, actually, he's hiding in the corner there, were in a summer workshop where our folks wanted to speak to all the people in the state, all of state organizations that affected policy. And we held in Plainville a summer session with all, I'll call it Alphabet Soup Group, I used to always call you, from Alphabet Soup Group, and the folks who are, and the folks from various entities like the State Board and the Education Committee came and spoke to our teacher leaders about what it is they do and how they do it and how teacher leaders could interact with them. We also have a huge annual institute. And that annual institute brought in big thinkers in education, like Tony Wagner, like Posse Solberg, like Peter Gamwell, folks who were well-known in their areas. And then, as the day went on, we would have breakout sessions run by and for teacher leaders in our state. And teacher leaders, I think you will hear from some of them, how this affected them. And then the other thing is, as a result of discussions and so on, some of these people actually went to go and visit other countries where some very interesting things are going on in education, like Finland. And by the way, there are 22 of us who are going to be going in April, assuming we don't have another COVID issue. And Canada, Ottawa, Canada. And they've gone there. And in the summer, we'll be going to Italy to see the Reggio Emilia Center there. So there's a lot, again, all these sparks that initiate thinking on the part of our teachers. Next slide. The folks who are here today and are just an amazing set of people, I want to say to you that they are not alone, and they're going to tell you that, they are representative of their colleagues. They have been doing some amazing work, some of which, if you haven't gotten a chance to just flip through this, you have it in your file. Virtually all the people who are presenting to you took the time during the pandemic to write, to talk about what they saw from their perspective as what was truly important about teaching and learning. That that gave them an opportunity to reflect and really think about how things should be, whether we're in a pandemic or not. And I think some of them would also tell you what it feels like to come back now and what's happening in schools. At any rate, each of them, they have a little description of their years in service and where they're from. You're going to see as they present to you, and we've tried to limit this. People have been told, limit to two minutes. And of course, I didn't. But they will be, I'm very hopeful of them. They will give you a sense of what it is that they've been doing as a result of taking part in this program. So Jen Norman from our technical schools will be up first, first to do that.
Nothing like going first, right?
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Norman. I've been an educator for 20 years. I currently work for the Connecticut Technical Education and Career System as an English instructor. And I've been a member of the Teacher Leader Fellowship Academy for four years. Four years ago, I saw myself as just a teacher. I never felt the need or calling to pursue anything more. I did not realize my inner capacity to lead. I was fortunate that an administrator in my district saw my potential and extended an invitation to attend the Teacher Leader Fellowship Academy. And I had no idea what I was getting myself into. My first year with the academy was transformative, and I began to see myself as more than a teacher. I saw myself as an instructional leader and began to change and grow. In the spring of 2019, I was able to go to Finland with the Teacher Leader Fellowship Academy, and I experienced a huge dispositional change. Something within me shifted, and my spirit lifted. I began to see my classroom and my role in my classroom in a different way. I have participated and greatly enjoyed dynamic dialogue with other teachers and administrators and attended many professional development workshops with educational professionals and great thinkers, such as Dr. Peter Gamwell, author of The Wonder Wall, and Dr. Ben Akall, the co-director of the Habits of Mind Institute. I have published several essays, including an essay in the monograph that you have included in your packet, that encapsulated my Finnish experience. I'm currently in the last semester of my doctoral program in curriculum and instruction. And most recently, as a teacher leader, I'm a co-founding member of the CTECH CARES Program. We work in the Connecticut Technical Education and Career System to design, develop, and implement Tier One and Tier Two authentic social-emotional learning materials and training to support faculty, staff, and students as we continue to transition and change throughout the pandemic. This work is at the heart of the CTECH's mission and focuses on the well-being and balance we all must maintain as we recover together. Because of my involvement in the TLFA and the influence it has had on me, I have come to see myself as a teacher leader who can be both strong and powerful for students. And I've begun to understand that I have a driving need to enact the kind of change that is before and currently, that is influential and critical to shape what is next in education. Four short years that have brought incredible changes and challenges for all of us. In four short years, I've grown from thinking of myself as just a teacher to teacher leader, a leader that can be characterized as deeply invested in the future of education and shaping the change that needs to come next. The part I haven't scripted is kind of hard to capture in words. But belonging to a group of invested educators across the state has enabled us through the pandemic to connect with one another in such meaningful and profound ways that I think many of us, you know, Margaret Wheatley talks about islands of sanity in her recent work. And I think for many of us, what this group has been is an island of sanity, where we find ourselves trying to challenge and think about what's next for our students in education. Where is it that we need to go? Being a member of TLFA has provided me with peers to have these immense dialogues with and to start to understand my role in shaping education as it is before us in an uncharted territory. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. My name is Grace Brennis, and I am an English teacher for 19 years in Stratford. I teach secondary education. Thank you. And I've been a member of the academy for about three years. I would just start with the quote that you see at the top of the screen there. That's by a student of mine. Her name is Alicia Antonassion. It's from an assignment that I use for students to introduce themselves to me. And my focus is more or less social-emotional learning. It says, "I believe you cannot fill someone else's cup if you have no water for yourself." This quote struck me, struck a chord with me, especially a few years ago before my involvement with the academy. And I felt that my voice was waning, not only in my own classroom, but even with my own department, my own English department. And after, just after a few months of professional development opportunities, meeting with these wonderful colleagues, I immediately got my voice back. Felt it strong, strength, confidence, and that translates to the classroom immediately. My students notice it, they feel it. And when they feel it, it translates specifically to what we're doing in the classroom. It creates trust, and that mutual trust creates mutual respect. Immediately, and just like Betty said, the success of students rises when they feel comfortable in the classroom. It's kind of interesting. They sometimes say, "I don't want to leave your classroom and go to my next period." I say, "You got to go." So it's interesting to have them want to stay with me, and I love that portion of it. The other thing I want to talk about is really that a perfect example of this story is a student that I have, his name is Josiah. He's a current student of mine, but I also had him as a freshman. I have the unique opportunity of having ninth graders and twelfth graders often return back to my classroom. And we were working on an assignment together. And he looked over at me and said, "I'm really happy to have you again." I looked at him and I said, "Really? Because I gave you a pretty hard time when you were a freshman." And he said, "Yeah, I know, but I really needed it." So I think that really proved to me that this academy has given me additional strength, additional voice, confidence, to be what he needed me to be. And the last thing I want to talk about is similar to what Jennifer talked about in terms of being an agent of change. This whole group really is an inspiration. They help to inspire each other, and there's a willingness to change and make changes. And we have the courage to redesign education. So it serves the new students, the new students that we see today, the new student that is struggling to come to class, the new student that is struggling to be engaged and not be on their phone, the students that really need us to be what they need us to be. And this academy helps to support those educators that need to be those people that those students need. Thank you.
Good morning. Or, yeah, still good morning by one minute. Okay. My name is Julia Darcy. I'm a 14-year veteran teacher representing the Bristol Public Schools. I'm currently a fifth-grade mathematics teacher at Green Hills K-8 School. I'm honored to be here with the Teacher Leader Fellowship Academy, which I've been a member for, for the past five years. Bristol Public Schools' participation in TLFA highlights its commitment to empowering teachers. TLFA, through professional development, networking, cross-state collaboration, shows teachers their voice matters. Teachers and administrators are leaders. And teachers have the ability to enact real change when given the opportunity to lead. And today, I'd like to share a specific example of this work. Last year, I was given the green light by our administrators to lead a professional book study with the book Culture and Genius by Goldie Muhammad. Ten of my colleagues joined to meet weekly to collaborate and learn. Through our meetings and our reading and our discussion, we soon became passionate about identity. In her book, Goldie Muhammad states, "Identity is made up of who we say we are, who others say we are, and the people we desire to be." Students are constantly making sense of who they are, and I argue, classroom instruction needs to be responsive to their identities. We soon became a committee focused on giving our students that space to explore and understand who they are. And again, this couldn't have been made possible without our administrators believing in us and giving us that power to lead. We've provided two professional developments to our staff on identity, and we meet monthly to create learning sequences focused on different aspects of identity for our staff and students during our SCL block. Some of our past learning sequences have had themes of traditions and holidays, hopes and dreams, "Where are you from?", "A Place for Me", and dreams, where are you from, a place for me, and the best part of me. During our best part of me sequence, my student, Jayla, shared, "The best part of me is my hair because it makes me confident and happy. My hair reminds me of my family." During our where are you from sequence, a student, Patricia, shared, "A place for me is Poland. Visiting Poland made me find out how special my culture is and how amazing it is to know a different language." These learning sequences tie directly to our district's S E L learning targets and our district's equity mission statement. We C L S E L and equity are interconnected. Our learning sequences have a goal of making our students feel seen, valued, and heard. Our learning sequences build relationships, strengthen connections, and form that backbone for equity. Once we know who our students are, once we see who they really are, then we as teachers can be really purposeful about our curricular planning. Our desired outcome is a culturally responsive learning environment where our students see themselves in their learning and truly feel a sense of belonging at school. This is just one example of how the Teacher Leader Fellowship Academy, along with its participating districts, are directly impacting students through empowering teachers. Thank you for your time.
Okay, these folks just give you a sense of what it's like for them. These folks are going to get up, there's another set of folks coming up who will address equity in particular. And then Maureen Brummitt and I will sit and we'll kind of show off and we'll take, we'll be open for questions.
Thank you. Good morning. It's an honor to be here. My name is Amy Mills. I'm a teacher for twenty-three years with P Tech and a T L F A member for approximately six years. T L F A has provided me with opportunities to learn and collaborate with teachers, administrators, and consultants like none others. The many experiences, along with COVID, has provided moments to reflect on concepts of equitable, equitable math curriculum and leadership in education. I believe it's time for us as educators to revisit our portrait of a graduate and the vision for the leaders of the future society and provide more equitable teaching and learning leadership and leadership experiences to foster their growth, growth and development. The latter involves a reflection of what type of leader I need to be to best support students and colleagues within my district. For example, this school year, I had the opportunity to collaboratively revise the district's math curriculum and pilot an equity-focused math program in my school. The latter involves thinking, thinking ways of ways, or rethinking ways of chunking math content and providing more authentic opportunities for the application of knowledge and skills as opposed to traditional ground instruction and learning practices. Additionally, S E L, collaboration, and evaluation were used to support ongoing discourse that fosters deep understanding of concepts. Through these practices, I have served increased understanding of students' knowledge and application of algebra concepts in real-life situations, reinforcing the fact that all students can learn and achieve at high levels. This opportunity also allows for reflection on mine and my district's leadership practices and the disposition we need to model for our student leaders. The latter includes the use of my voice to shape ideas and strategies to foster diverse leadership in my classroom and the district as a whole. And to expand discourse around the use of minority teacher committees and the T L F As as a pipeline to support growth, exposure, and improve outcomes for diverse teacher leaders across the state. So educators, I am using this platform to reinforce the idea that we need to feed what we want to grow. As Albert Camus states, "Real generosity towards the future lies in giving all to the present." Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Good afternoon. My name is Anthea Zazalia Grattan. I'm a third-generation educator and a veteran teacher of twenty-one years. I teach kindergarten in Holland. I joined T L F A in two thousand eighteen, and it really, for me, reignited my passion for teaching and helped me to realize that I'm a teacher leader. I wasn't just that person that was on every committee, and I wasn't just really busy or even worse, an overachiever. I am a teacher leader. Through my work with T L F A, I use my voice to lift others, working with supportive administrators to help build staff capacity. I encourage all school staff to use their voices to create change for themselves, their students, and our school. Through the work, I encourage staff and administration to explore creative ways to meet students' and family needs, especially during these very difficult last two years. We explore creative ways to collect and look at data so that all students are engaged and feel successful. We're doing ongoing work to build staff capacity around equity and representation. We have a dedicated team, and our admin supports the work that we do. We've created literacy resources with books and lessons to include all students and families. These books and lessons went to everyone in the building, the nurses' office, the librarian, the specialist teachers. Everyone had them so that everyone was speaking the same language. Books included topics that cover identity, social justice, art, different perspectives, breaking down stereotypes with titles such as "Boys Dance" and "Pink is a Girl Color." Just last week, being a kindergarten teacher, I had to bring a book with me. Just last week, I was reading this beautiful book, "Full Wet," and one of my students looked up at me and said, "Mrs. Grattan, she looks just like me." Representation matters, that student felt seen, and she's been talking about it ever since. We created a working book list and wrote a grant and purchased books to illustrate things such as creativity and joy, diverse perspectives, and representation for students in the world around them. Through the work, the staff saw that their voices matter, and some now see themselves as the teacher leaders that they are and that they have always been. Students see what's possible and that there are opportunities for joy and love and learning. My slide shows my impact. So our impact for our students is that, is that we see them and that we see them and believe in them. This picture right there, that's my impact. Both of these students, from very different beginnings, they now know that I believe in them and that I see them. My classroom represents these students. Our work did that. Our work through T L F A has created transformative change, not just for students, but for teachers as well. That is our impact. Thank you for your time and your support.
Thank you so much, Anthea. Thank you so much for having us here this morning. My name is Tawana Graham Douglas, and I am the Curriculum Director for Plainville Community Schools. I have been an educator for over twenty-four years, and sixteen of those years were in the classroom. We have partnered with the Teacher Leader Fellowship Academy since its inception. The teachers and administrators that have participated celebrate many aspects of the program. One of the most discussed events includes our shared experiences involving international travel to visit world-class educational systems. Traveling abroad has provided both teachers and administrators with a vision of vocational education that is equal to that of college preparation in both Finland and in Canada. When we talk about equity, we imagine an educational structure that provides all students, that prepares them for success post their high school graduation, among the goals of the Teacher Leader Fellowship Academy. As Dr. Sternberg shared with you earlier, it's to support administrators in creating a climate and cultures which will allow teachers' leadership to thrive and to flourish. Several administrators and teachers in Plainville engage in the international trips to Finland and Canada. And as you know, Finland and Canada usually rank within the top five schools internationally when it comes to the quality of their education, their graduation rates, and the completion of post-secondary training, both academic and vocational. These visits have helped Plainville schools in several ways. What we have learned from our international colleagues has provided various models for ways of uplifting the profession through the respect for teaching, rigorous training preparation, and autonomy, which has led us to incorporating the voice of teachers and involving them in strategic planning and decision-making, specifically in the area of designing relevant career pathways for students. Earlier, Dr. Sternberg shared the research of Ingersoll and his colleagues and highlighted the importance of a collaborative vision. Working with T L F A has helped us to cultivate an environment in Plainville Community Schools where that truly happens. Partnering with T L F A has aided in providing a vision for incorporating vocational education and training into a traditional United States pre-K twelve educational structure to provide pathways to college and career success that values career preparation and applied learning. Such a model creates a learning environment that values engagement, the relevance of learning experiences, and the voices of students, teachers, and families. Within our current structures, teachers are empowered to share their thoughts, ideas, suggestions, and expertise to guide the learning process, providing agency and opportunity for advocacy. We look forward to our continued partnership with T L F A so that we can all learn and move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tawana. Good afternoon. My name is Sahana Smith. I'm the principal of Reed School in Bridgeport. I've been an educator for twenty-eight years and the principal of Reed for eight years. I'm honored to be here today to speak with you about the importance of the Teacher Leader Fellowship Academy. When I first learned of the T L F A, I was excited to join because I thought it would provide networking opportunities. I approached a few teachers and they eagerly agreed to join as the team from Reed School. For the past five years, there have been several teachers who participated in the program with me. In fact, each year, I have more and more teachers who are interested in joining. It has been so valuable for us to connect with other educators from around the state in a way that is deeper than simply networking. Having meaningful dialogue about issues that directly impact educators and students is priceless. My teachers have felt valued and uplifted by having their voice heard. Several of the teachers that have joined me in T L F A have taken on leadership roles. One is currently a assistant principal at another school within our district, and one is an elementary academic support instructor at Reed, and she's currently seeking an administrative position. The Reed School team presented on our work implementing social and emotional learning at several annual T L F A institutes. The last year that we presented in person, which was, of course, before the pandemic, my teachers were beyond delighted to have other educators come to them and ask questions about implementing S E L in their districts and schools. My team was shocked by this positive attention and praise because in our district, we have always struggled with resources. We've been underfunded and under-resourced for decades. So, used to being the underdog, it was a very new experience for my teachers to view themselves as leaders in the movement for social and emotional learning. In two thousand twenty-one, I contributed to Timothy Walker's book, "In Teachers We Trust: The Finnish Way to World-Class Schools." I met Tim during a trip to Finland in two thousand eighteen that I took as a T L F A fellow. After several discussions I had with Tim about the importance of building teacher trust, he asked me to write something for his upcoming book, and I'd like to read an excerpt. It has been my experience that when teachers feel that their voices are heard and their ideas are valued, they are more inclined to feel connected to their colleagues and support the school community. These feelings of connectedness are built upon trust and respect. The teachers whose ideas are respected and included, particularly when they support the school's vision and mission, feel more connected to school. Teachers who are encouraged to collaborate and share their knowledge with others tend to feel valued, and this causes them to be committed to the school community. A collaborative environment is not achieved in isolation or in pockets. Teachers and staff throughout the school must be encouraged to work collaboratively and then supported in their ongoing efforts. And I'd like to close by commenting on this bell hooks quote. To me, it really captured how community, mutual respect, and trust generate excitement. Excitement is what is needed to build and maintain a strong school culture and climate, and T L F A helps me support this vision. Thank you very much for having us.
I'll finish off with Georgina Rivera from Bristol and Maureen Brummitt, Superintendent of Newington.
So I will be remiss to kind of say one last BS to everybody. My name is Georgina Rivera. I am the vice president of the National Council of Supervisors of Mathematics. I am a proud school administrator for the Bristol Public Schools, but my most important role is being a supporter of teacher leaders. The Teacher Leader Fellowship Program really gave me the opportunity to be the leader that I've always wanted to be. In my leadership programs, it was always a top-down approach, and in my classes, everything that I learned was top-down. But when I entered this program and I spent time with Betty and learning about teacher leaders and hearing from their voices, it was referring to me that I didn't need to lead. What I needed to do was I needed to listen. I needed to listen to the teachers that were in my classrooms. I needed to listen to my students and listen to my families. It is clear today that with all the teachers that you heard from, they don't need to be led. They need to be listened to. They need to be empowered, understood, and I need to advocate for them. Earlier today, as I was listening to your meeting, I heard about teacher shortages. Well, one way I believe to mitigate that is to empower teachers as leaders. The teachers that I work with are amazing and have creative skills, but they need to be empowered to be leaders within our classrooms, within our schools. I would draw your attention to the quote that I have because that's the why behind my work. I believe in equity for each and every student, and so Brian Stevenson from the Equal Justice Initiative really talks about proximity. If I want to be a great leader, I need to be close so I can hear what I need to hear and see what I need to see. The reason why I have any impact at all is because I spend lots of time with teachers, learning from them, and lots of times with my students, learning. I believe this is the way that we help mitigate teacher shortages by empowering teachers to be seen and heard within our schools, just like our students want to be seen and heard within our schools. I want to share with you two examples that I also have on the screen. These are three national blogs by my teachers in my building. I empowered them to be teacher leaders and to take initiatives in areas that were concerning our building, and once they had an impact, to write their stories. The first one is around mathematics. I am very passionate about the area of mathematics, and I heard earlier at your meeting, some of the charter schools are struggling with mathematics. Well, where we're reimagining mathematics instruction in our school is the use of research-based practices. Julia, we've heard from earlier today, is building and thinking classrooms. This is a brand new research study out of Canada, and we're using all of those practices to accelerate our learning. Just to give you some idea of the impact, last year during COVID, our school went from labs within our district to parks by listening to teachers and taking those research-based practices to move our students to the highest level of achievement they have ever gotten in our school system. Secondly, you want to examine school libraries. When I entered my school library, it did not reflect the students within our school. I have my memory, and I challenge her, "Can we have a library that reflects our students?" She did it in the study of home voice authors, where people are sharing their stories of their own lived experiences, and now, not only is our library different and it reflects our students, like Anthea was saying earlier, she shared all of that work, and now all of the libraries across Bristol, Connecticut are culturally relevant. That was only done through the work of teacher leaders. I can only say I'm a humble servant of all of these leaders, and we need more school administrators that are serving and listening to teachers. And we need teacher leadership programs that empower administrators to co-lead with teachers so they feel seen and heard, and we can save this profession. Because I love the profession of teaching, but I know that I can only be a leader if I have teachers that are serving alongside me. So I just want to say a great thank you to Betty Sternberg for creating this amazing program to affirm everything that I believe, and I ask all of you, please consider expanding programs like this and teaching our administrators to co-lead with all of our teachers to create greater outcomes for each and every one of our students and also bring hope back into the schools of Connecticut. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Georgina. I'm Maureen Brummitt, Superintendent of Schools in Newington, previously Superintendent of Schools in Plainville. And that is how I came to know Betty. She, when she was first publicizing this program, she stumbled all over the state and came to Newington, we had assigned Plainville, and was very convincing. And those of you around the table that know Betty, know she can be very convincing. In fact, she followed me when I left Plainville to go to Newington. She made sure I stayed with the Teacher Leader Fellowship, but that wasn't a hard sell once I've been involved since its inception. And I will say that, before I get into the content, I'll be brief about her head of the rear here, is that the networking that has provided to me and my colleagues sitting around the table today and the lifelong friendship. I consider Betty now a friend and a mentor as a result of our relationship in this organization. I went to Finland with many of the folks around the table because of that, our partner Smith, and I came with my interns as a result of our connection through this network. So besides all the great things you've heard from the folks speaking prior to me, it's just that networking and collegiality and really learning from each other and all the discussions that people have. But I'll finish around all the comments today with two stories, one from Plainville and one from Newington. When I was in Plainville, we had several teachers part of this organization, and they were so struck with how they could actually be problem solvers. They would, I would go to the meetings with them, and we would be batting around ideas, and they came up with wanting to do something called a number sense story, and that was something that was leveraged to increase our math achievement in Newington, sorry, at Plainville. And after that was implemented through the discourse of this organization, I was thrilled to see our test scores went up in Plainville to the extent that some colleagues in neighboring districts called it out to me, "What are you guys doing in math? Because your scores are really pretty impressive." And that was all because of the teachers and the agency they got being involved in this program. Fast forward to Newington, where I've been, most of the time I've been there since in the middle of the pandemic. middle of the pandemic, but even in spite of that, this organization allowed folks to waste in my district. And this time it was actually the school counselor at the high school, and she is fabulous, a very talented counselor and a justice later. She's been involved for a number of years. She's looking upon herself to leverage her work in this TLFA to work with students who wanted to talk to adults at the school about what the pandemic had done for them, to them, and how they needed help coming back from it. So she lent their voice and actually had them present at one of Betty's many workshops. And these students, I was in the room with them when they were presenting, it was virtual, the type of pride that they exuded by being able to tell their story, by being able to have that kind of voice in front of a statewide audience, the pride that they showed when I was embracing them with an afterword, it was just an amazing experience for them. So, hopefully by my remarks and those that have come before me, you can see the wide net that this organization cast and the type of benefits that it can provide to our teachers. Because we all want to keep teachers in our profession, we want them to keep growing, and we want to make sure that they know that they are very valuable to sustaining the work that we need to do. So now I will turn it back over to the founder, Dr. Stenger.
Okay, we very much thank you, you all, for being here. We are going to need to, do you have much more?
I just have one last slide to come up about what you can do to the State Board. First of all, I just go there. You issue position statements. The last one was done in 2002 when I was Associate Commissioner, and then that's the last one that was done. If you look at it on your website, it needs to be updated. And I would say, doing it in the way that we're talking about is what is important to do, to include our teachers to develop, to develop that statement. And believe me, more local boards do listen to your position statements, and I think it would make a big difference to have an updated statement. On your website, gee, you now have such a great website compared to when I was Commissioner. You could put work of teacher leaders on the website, and people will look at it. Teachers will look at it, administrators will look at it. And then last but not least, we have had Ken Kay talk to us about, and many of you know in your districts or in your communities, that having a portrait of a student. Well, he now talks about in his newest book, and he came and talked to us about developing a portrait of a educator, of a teacher leader. What you could do is work together to do a statewide portrait of a leader, a teacher leader who enables creativity, innovation, and collaboration among colleagues and students. If we are going to attract high-quality folks, first of all, you all know, you must know young people who are, the fields that they are interested in going in are ones that provide them efficacy and input. This is a way, this is an avenue to do that. And keeping our, our teachers who have been in the field for, you see how many years our people have been around the table, this is a renewal for them. They, they have to believe and feel agency and believe that they can be creative and innovative in order to enable their own students and other colleagues to be truly creative and innovative. And there is a role for the State Board, there's a role for all of us in, in creating a situation where this continues to happen, and we have a strong system for all our great kids in the state.
Well, we thank you for coming today. We thank you for all of your examples of, of leadership and, and for your projections for the, for the State Board. It was really wonderful to hear the different examples and, and to see for ourselves how you've been ignited in the work that you're doing. Do any of the board members have any questions or any, any comments to make on this presentation?
Oh, I found, I found the work to be, you deserve an applause for coming out, and I, and I'm curious, yes, I, I want to applaud the good work you do, and, and thank you for bringing that to us and sharing that. How do you, how do you identify your teacher process? Because I noticed that all of the presenters were females. How do we go about targeting for the males?
I mean, you know how many females there are in our field now, but there are males in there, there really are males in the program. I thought about that, that, you know, that boy, we didn't have, we didn't have many of our, of our male partners come, but there are, there are males in the program. And each district, and I have to tell you that we started a little bit with, oh, we had some rules about, about identifying people and so on. Then it became clear that we should do just what we're saying we should do to, with students, which is pull on the strengths of the particular district. Each district has their own way of creating, of identifying who might be in the program. And there are some funny stories about teachers coming to the table and saying, what's this teacher leader thing? I didn't know I was a teacher leader. And some of these people echoed that, and it, it, it is, it is amazing how there's this, 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 the sense of, who me, I'm just a teacher, for the people who are already there, and it's, and they are more than just a teacher. They are really leaders in everything they do.
Absolutely. Well, we certainly agree with that. Thank you for being here, and I think between the Commissioner and probably one of our committees, I won't name one here, will probably want to dig into this a little bit more around how we might support.
And thank you for having us.
I just really want to thank you as well for being here and for this board to be able to have teacher voice represented in the room. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sean. All right. How y'all doing? Hanging in there?
We're gonna keep moving.
You need a break? It is ready, all right.
Do you call for recess?
It is 12:30. Shall we recess for?
I'm looking to see where, where people are.
How much longer do we have?
I can push through.
Push through, you have to push through.
Yeah.
All right, so that's, that's, that's two of the multiple questions, and, and the questioner, so, so keep moving, all right. Let's move to financial matters, and let's let Kathy go ahead and present. You do have in your supplemental material, the document on the midterm budget overview.
Good afternoon, Chairman Dubois.
Dubois, somehow.
My husband says I shouldn't have dropped the Dubois. Welcome to the ladies. And Commissioner Vice Mayor Benham and other board members, I will be very quick. The Governor's proposed midterm budget adjustment for the upcoming fiscal year came out in probably about two and a half weeks ago now. There are several proposals that impact the department's budget. I will highlight very quickly, I included a summary of them in your, I think in your supplemental package you got them. In terms of staffing, there is a consolidation at heart for IT services in, across the state. So similar to the consolidation that was done with HR services under the Department of Administrative Services, they're going to consolidate IT services under the Department of Administrative Services. So both ourselves and CTEC, you will see positions and funding associated with that transferred out of the department. Those staff will report to, if this taxes in the budget, those staff will then report to DAS and provide us service from that central location. We also have three positions, as you are aware, the Superintendent gave an update, I believe it was at our last board meeting about the separation. As part of that, our affirmative action staff that we shared as a joint agency will be transitioning to CTEC in order to support them. I think the idea of continuity of services, given that they are the much larger employer and the number of students they serve, it made sense for them to keep experienced affirmative action professionals. We have contracted with the Department of Administrative Services for them to provide what will be a much smaller size-wise agency, not money-wise, but size-wise, for affirmative action services for S E Central Office. The CTEC proposed adjustments to the major education funding grant, which is ECS. Those adjustments actually were based on changes in demographics in the student populations. This actually is right in line with the report that Ajit gave you this morning on the condition of education and the decline in enrollment actually persisting. We had anticipated a bounce back, and that did not occur. So therefore, that funding isn't a matter of reducing funding that people currently have, it is literally adjusting the funding that is available based on the actual enrollment counts. This year, the Alliance District Program needs to be reauthorized by statute. This is something that we have, the department is working on in cooperation with the Office of Policy and Management, and so this happens every five years. Thirty-three districts have been identified as Alliance Districts for the upcoming five years. Three districts will graduate from the Alliance District Program, and three new districts will come in. We wish to celebrate those who are graduating and, but at the same time provides continued support. So our proposal includes ongoing support for the next five years and a, holding them harmless from a funding perspective to ensure that the successes that they have seen while they were part of the Alliance District Program continue. And then I will not go through the chef settlement, that is the largest increase to our budget was related to the settlement. There's an update in the charter school account, this is not related to CTEC, there's been some confusion about that. This is actually related to the change in demographics, similar to the change that we're seeing in ECS. The demographics of our students have, in terms of need, students have continued to decline, and we believe that's correlated with the fact that we did not recoup those 15,000 students that we had lost. Finally, all state agencies were asked to submit proposals to the Office of Policy and Management to use federal American Rescue Plan Act funds. These are separate funds from our SRT dollars, so the education relief dollars that the department receives. The department proposed, and the Governor accepted it as part of his proposed midterm adjustments, an expansion of our learner engagement and attendance program, and increase college opportunities through dual enrollment program, providing additional summer enrichment opportunities. I know the Commissioner mentioned earlier in her report how successful the summer offerings were last summer, and we are going to continue that, and we're able to commit the same amount of fund, actually a little bit more funding to it this year because of the Governor's willingness to provide us with some of the ARPA funds for this purpose. And finally, there is a provision for us to pack funding through to the American School for the deaf in order for them to do some things on their campus. And the last piece of the summary was around the CTEC, and I've explained those positions earlier. Again, they're related to the transfer of IT services and then the transfer from us of the affirmative action staff. And so I'm happy to take any questions?
Thank you, Kathy. Other questions? Yes.
Kathy, I know that when the, it was a presentation to the board last, at the last meeting about the, the separation and the dollars needed for that, is, where is that in here?
That is part of the report that went to the General Assembly, so those funds were not included as the Governor's midterm adjustments, because the report was just completed and sent over to the General Assembly. So I believe that, my understanding of that's something we will be working, that is something that Lauren is working on.
Okay, so I wanted to get lost here.
Please, Chair Benham.
Kathy, what is the three Alliance districts who are graduating? Who are they? What districts? Winchester, Groton, and Norwalk. Who's coming in? Stratford, Plainfield, and, and Fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I am nine, it's the consent agenda. Is anybody wishing to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing nine, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
No.
Second. Okay, all of them in favor?
All right.
No, no discussion on consent.
All in favor? Any, any votes?
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item 10B, we have a final report on the Antonia Derby Temporary Regional School Study Committee.
You know, I'm Mike McCann, Legal Director with the Department, and with me is one of my colleagues, the department's legal guru on school regionalization. Thank you. Issues. And Matt has been actively involved with the efforts of the Antonia Derby Regional School Study Committee, and he just wanted to follow up with the board about its status.
Sure. Good afternoon, Matt Benhorst, a lawyer with the, with the department, as Mike said, I work on regionalization matters. One of the, sort of subset to that, is working with the Temporary Regional School Study Committee. And I thought the way that I would approach this is first to provide a brief overview of the regionalization process, then to talk specifically about Antonia Derby, and then I can take some questions. Does that sound, sound all right? Okay, great. So as the board report indicates, in order to form a regional district, what the statutes call for is for the towns to vote to form this Temporary Regional School Study Committee, which is kind of a mouthful. And it, it's basically, it's five persons from each town. So in the case of Antonia Derby, or any town, any group with two towns, it's 10 people, five on each side, and, and the way the process works is they study this issue of whether it's advisable to form a regional school district, and they prepare a report on that issue, and the statutes set forth lots of different things that the report has to contain, and, the way the process works, basically, at the conclusion of the report process, the committee, at least the way it's contemplated in the statutes, makes a recommendation as to the advisability, submits the report to the State Board of Ed, and the State Board can either approve it or, or disapprove it, and if there, if it's, you know, compliant with the law, the State Board would typically approve it, and a regional school district is formed if, after the State Board approves that, it goes back to the towns for a referendum, and then at referendum, the townspeople vote on whether to form a regional school district. And so if you have a positive vote in both towns, that's how a regional school district is formed. And so Antonia Derby, in 2018, they, they started down this road, and they worked in earnest, I would say, on, on these issues as contemplated by the statute studying, lots of different things, including program studies, looking at facilities, different types of regionalization models. They, they conducted focus groups, they worked with a consultant from Boston District Management Group, and so they, they did a lot of work in 2018 and 19, a little bit of a slowdown in 2020 with the pandemic, and sort of fast-forwarding a little bit, so kind of fast-forwarding to, to the current year, there were some, some areas of disagreement that became apparent between different members on the committee, and as you might imagine, broke down along town lines, and some of those issues are outlined in the board report. I'll just give a brief summary here along the lines of board governance. How many schools would be used in the regionalization model, whether it's four or three? Also a question about how savings would be allocated. And those issues arose, I would say, in early 2021. And kind of the next significant, step in the process that we're meeting along the way. And Antonia, its own initiative, by a resolution, and this probably means the late 2021, as to how to resolve these issues and the resolution. Basically proposed a structure that Antonia was in favor of and that Derby was opposed to. And again, just kind of fast-forwarding, giving a highlight here. The Derby Board then held a meeting and we got the Derby Board of Ed. Not technically part of the committee. Obviously, they had a meeting and they discussed the proposed resolution and they opposed the resolution, six to nothing with three extensions. After that, the following month in January was a vacancy on the Temporary Regional School Study Committee. And the Derby Board of Aldermen and Aldermen and Alderwomen could not fulfill that vacancy. There was canceled meetings in December, January, and February. And the committee basically expired by operation of law in February 2022. So the statutes contemplate that we need to make a formal report as to the advisability of regionalization. In this case, this did not happen. Obviously, one side was, that was opposed to the efforts. And so the report that you have before you is the, it's an interim report from the committee. The end of 2021 report, it was never endorsed by the, by the committee as a whole because the committee canceled a number of meetings. But the two chairs of the committee, one from Antonia and one from Derby, have endorsed the report and agreed. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that summary and for the report that's included in here.
You're welcome.
Are there, are there questions on this?
I just got a question. Are there any other open regi-
Yes, there are, as a matter of fact. There's one involving Region Six and Litchfield. And that's, that'll be probably up on the board agenda sometime very soon.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, we thank you for this work.
Thank you.
And the report. And we'll not be seeing a change in that, apparently, anytime soon. But certainly appreciate the work that went into that.
Thank you.
Someday, Connecticut will start to think a little more regionally on a lot of things. We'll continue to hope for some opportunities for that kind of thing.
Won't be in your life, then.
I didn't say that. I'm not in Derby at all. I didn't say that. I am an office. Okay, our commissioner has assured us that we are going to be expeditious in our agency updates as we know we're pushing on time now. So let's move to agency updates.
Something, but I have the staff who is doing the presentation to be here and be present in your summaries and everything that you have. And I think we provide this in your package anyway, so people will have them. So many are already up. And Irene, I'm trying, which she shouldn't be at the microphone.
Everybody is queued up.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So the first update we would like to provide you with is that we have released the Connecticut Standards for Remote Learning. They were actually released on National Digital Learning Day on February 22nd, 2022.
That was always planned.
They're organized, much like all other standards that we provide in a set of domains and standards. We've had a rigorous review process and stakeholder engagement process to make sure that we've designed something that is at a high level and a useful resource in the district. Ajit and I hosted an informational webinar last evening and we had over 80 participants. And we provided them with some case illustrations or case studies of what they should be thinking about and what they should not fail to consider in their design. So this is present and ongoing as we continue to share this resource for the state. And this, again, is just a reminder for authorizing local and regional boards to implement remote learning in the fall for students in grades nine through 12. Next slide. Some academic academic office has been busy. And February was CTE Awareness Month. So what we've done is we put together a PD playlist for teachers and for schools and CTE leaders to really promote awareness of CTE programming in your school or district. The PD playlist was distributed and is now housed in the CT Learning Hub so that districts can continue to come back to it and hopefully promote CTE awareness every month. The Connecticut Pathway System Institute, we partnered with NC3T. And I can give you the name of that organization. But really what we're doing here is to coach and support district teams to improve career readiness outcomes and create pathway implementation goals and really collaborate with business and industry so that we can sustain these effective pathways for students. We're currently working with over 30 districts and four cohorts. The Computer Science Professional Learning Action Network, that CSPLAN, is something where we partnered with Sacred Heart University to develop this project to provide Connecticut districts and K-12 computer science professionals with those opportunities. And districts have been selected, or they will be selected, based on their ability to really scale computer science or computer science education for the next school year. That's present and ongoing. I'm sure we'll have more updates to come. We've launched and continue to partner in the Lieutenant Governor's Computing Challenge. We're in our third year of doing this. The theme for this year is Coding for Good: Inspiring Health and Wellness for All. It's open to all Connecticut students in grades three through 12. And students are to actually create applications designed to inspire health and wellness for all. Red, White, and Blue Program is a program that is co-sponsored by our office, the Academic Office, the Secretary of State's office, and the Democracy Center at the Old State House. The program really recognizes elementary, middle, and high school to do an outstanding job of developing civically-minded students. The theme this year is Civics at the Local and State Level. And the last update is the Field of Literacy. The Academic Office has been working to really increase participation and awareness and create more visibility. I do want to thank Eric Scoville and the Communications Department for partnering with us and really helping us in getting this out. This work includes the new Field of Literacy webpage at the CFDE portal. We're creating a series of multi-tiered communications and tools and resources to really develop and disseminate the information and hopefully that we can spread this existing opportunity for students. It really is focused on multiple stakeholder groups, students, families, schools, and districts, higher ed, and the business community, and including multilingual materials for all so that they can really leverage this field of literacy. Those are the Academic Office updates. I'll now turn it over, I believe, to Lisa Almond.
Great, thank you. Thank you. So this update is the turnaround office professional development that we do with our school leaders called NETSTAT. It is three times a year. And Friday, we held our winter session. And in spite of the snow and weather, we had over 80 participants show up. And this year, we had a continuous learning platform of the Hexagon. So in fact, Ms. Swack already mentioned it today during her presentation. It's a way for schools and districts to assess the fit and feasibility of programs and practices that they currently have in place to see if they are, in fact, the right fit. And especially with the pandemic, a lot has changed and shifted and the needs are all different. So this is the process that we have embarked on this year with them. And this is both for Commissioner's Network and Charter Schools.
I'm just saying, run away. No, I really just want to appreciate Lisa's work, Debbie, and with all the charter school reviews. And just to share with you, I know, I could tell that Lisa was going to say something this morning about chronic absenteeism and the work that we're doing specifically around charter schools. So the schools are not on their own.
Correct.
We recognize the challenge. And so across the team here will be working to provide very specific supports to charter schools that's struggling around attendance.
Agreed. They have been invited to all of those supports up until this point. And we're also looking for some additional targeted assistance to those schools that are really struggling. And the corrective action plan process, that's what I wanted to jump in and say. There's a real sense of urgency that happens after these schools come before you to improve and really hone in on those root causes and develop a very actionable plan with many stakeholders at the table.
I'll say so really quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
I know we're moving along. But is there any way, Commissioner, that we can bring a few teachers or superintendents or even folks who work in schools in the community to talk about what's happening due to the pandemic? Because there's always this kind of preamble with folks who present, like when they say "due to the pandemic." But I want to, I want to make sure that the board really knows what is happening on the ground with these families that, you know, that, you know, there's a scorecard as there should be. But I want to make sure that we really understand what is happening, especially around chronic absenteeism and all these things. But, you know, I know just due to the work that I do, and I know our chair knows based on her work. But I want to, I think it's important. I really do. So I don't know if we can bring people to talk about it.
We absolutely can. And thank you for bringing that forward. As you know, this is an area of such critical urgency and concern for us. And I know we hear the "due to the pandemic." I just want us not to sit there.
That's right.
It's too easy to do that. And so to continue to make sure that we're doing due diligence and putting out all the stuff and innovating really in that space, but understanding the root causes and what the realities are on the ground is critically important to address in the real issues that are there. So we will absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Excellent. Please chair.
Lisa, don't go anywhere yet. Just in common, it was very, it was wonderful, actually, to hear every single one of the charter schools that came before us compliment not only you, your team, your staff, all of the staff. And it was just wonderful to see. You started off the whole presentation by "thank you." And I think, you know, we need to thank you because you did not include that. Your guidance with accountability and support is so, so very much appreciated. So I wanted to make sure that you got accolades that you deserve as well. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And let's see, John, you're already at the table?
So here, this slide shows the increases in vaccination rates in those two categories. I won't go through them. Suffice to say that we're continuing to work with DPH to stand up mold vans in other clinics and districts to continue that. Project COVID Detect, again, we've got 29 public school districts participating. Again, that's the weekly surveillance testing of students in school districts to determine if there is someone in the school district who has COVID. It's a surveillance testing. It's not based on symptoms. Announcement on that is that the DPH has just announced that that's going to be open to vaccinated and unvaccinated staff also in those participating districts. So they're expanding that. So that's exciting news. Next slide. The behavioral health pilot that we're in the process of implementing, as you know, in response to the incredible need out there for social, emotional, behavioral, mental health supports for students and staff. The commissioner's set up this pilot program. We've identified six districts to roll this out with. And we're identifying expert partners to help us roll this out. The districts will be working with us. I can tell you, we have small rural districts, we have urban districts, we have suburban districts, we have a charter school in there, we have some nice mix of folks. And our hope and our goal is that we can identify the need of these districts, implement some supports for these districts, whether that's inside the schoolhouse or outside the schoolhouse or both, and then be able to scale this up statewide to similarly situated districts across the state. So this ultimately will become a statewide initiative to provide behavioral health supports in schools.
And as you know, this is John's and the team's effort of helping me achieve that big audacious goal of making sure there's systems of support in every school building in our state to address behavioral and mental health needs of not just students but also staff. So it is, OPM has given us, I think, $3 million to get this pilot started. And we're eager to get that going so we can learn from it, so we can quickly really look at scaling this.
Terrific. So guidance update. I think you all received the guidance that was issued, that we issued last, gosh, I guess it was a little over a week ago. Two new guidance documents. The first model focuses on basically the changes in the trajectory of the disease, moving towards sort of a seasonal influenza model rather than a disease prevention model. So this is looking, having, helping districts look at COVID, looking at outbreaks, looking at the possibility of school transmission, looking at increases in case numbers, but not contact tracing and not trying to prevent individual cases. Just really sort of pulling back a little as the numbers in the community, transmission rates and hospitalizations are going down. It preserves school health staff to focus on where the need is to get, you know, make sure that folks who are in the school with COVID get out and isolated. So working in that direction, but also being prepared in case things change. If the numbers change, that folks are ready for, to change policies. The second document really provides a series of questions that districts should be and have been looking at with regard to whether they're going to change their policy and continue to require mask mandates in schools, or they're going to change to a mask optional. So there are a series of questions that are related to what's the available data? What is the district and community risk tolerance? Making sure you're communicating and coordinating with your local health departments and continue to determine and prepare for if the data, if the data changes.
And we set up a survey just so folks know just we know what each district, the decision that they're making, mask optional, are keeping the mandate. So I think we've given the district, it's a short survey, just maybe one or two questions. So we'll be able to have that information and we'll be shared with you so we know what's going on across the state.
Sure, Larry, been here.
I know. I didn't see my first slide. I'm embarrassed. So I just wanted to give you all a quick update on the additional rapid test kits that are being distributed at the moment. During, over the course of this week, there's going to be an additional 2 million rapid tests distributed to our public and private schools across the state. This is the final phase of a three-part distribution. So in total, now 3.7 million tests have been distributed across the state since September 31st, 2021. This final phase is part of our statewide effort to assist our districts as they transition to a mask optional policy. So that's our update on test kits for today.
Thank you very much. And I know John's got a child nutrition update. Mike, I'm going to do something really challenging for you. So you've got about three slides or four slides and we need you to do one line. You know, tell us what we need to know about the governor's executive orders.
All right, while Mike's coming up, one last update is that-
I think the fact that our room is so empty and our public comments is so short already gives the punchline on masking.
Just, I'm sorry, just want to quickly mention that the CDC changed their guidance with regard to masking on school buses. That came out very timely, late on Friday afternoon, thanks to CDC. Because I do have that on the district as well.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Special Act 2021 extended 11 of the executive orders, either Department Hall. The broken ones were inspections, one of the executive board denied, 13A, which permitted or actually mandated full masking. Was extended to June 30th, 2022 when simultaneously the legislature empowered the Commission of Education, Early Childhood, DPH, to permit or to suspend the statewide mandate since February 28th, 2022. That has occurred pursuant to a DPH order on February 23rd. And that followed February 18th guidance that John referenced in DPH and CFDE closely collaborated on giving guidance to districts as to what to consider in making that decision as to whether or not to go mask optional. Just one other thing on the executive orders. 13G, which had required that school employees be fully vaccinated or the alternative get weekly testing, that was expressly not extended. Therefore, as of February 16th, schools- Therefore, as of February 16, schools were permitted to retain employees, also hire applicants who are either not vaccinated and were not getting the weekly testing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, thank you. Last, not lastly.
Okay, lastly, child nutrition programs, those, you'll see the numbers for December and school year today. I think the most notable thing here is that since the start of the pandemic, since schools were closed in March of 2020, school districts have served over one hundred million meals to students, that includes breakfast and lunch. So a pretty impressive milestone, given the supply chain issues and given all of the transitions between sending meals home and some kids in and some kids out. So just want to acknowledge the work of our school nutrition directors out in the school districts and also our in-house child nutrition staff who authorized all of that work, who are too shy to come down and get accolades in person, but they were... And so the hundred million meals, I just want to add, so to give some perspective, schools are serving about a million more meals every month than they were prior to the pandemic. So half a million breakfasts and half a million lunches are happening now that we're not, that more so than were happening prior to the pandemic. So a lot of work happening then. So thanks.
Hopefully, extend our recognition and thanks to the shy team that did that one. We certainly value the work they've done. Thank you for that. It's my speaking, my vice chair, Ben, for that. I'm recording speaking. The agency updates are so important. As we turn to committee reports, I did want to say, as I mentioned, I'll be reaching out to each of the chair, and we'll be talking about things. I'll be reaching out to each of you, though, also about all of our meetings and getting your feedback around that. Everything that we're supposed to do will happen on our agenda, but you may find in future meetings that things are moved around in some ways. I think it's important that our board business gets attended to, and we tend to get to the committee reports at the end of a very long meeting and then sort of race through all the board work, and I want to be able to adjust it into the work that our committee should be doing. So we may switch some things around. But for today, we're in the standard academic standard report. Is there a report?
Our next meeting will be next Tuesday, March 18.
All right, thank you. Time to leave the report. Accountability and support had a meeting last month. East Hartford Public Schools came in as the Alliance District showcased best practices. We had a wonderful presentation from East Hartford. It is clearly a district that is very focused on their diversity and hiring. Ajit mentioned earlier that, you know, and actually the Commissioner also, that, you know, that this is, as our goals, we've hit the ten percent mark. East Hartford has excelled that. So it was very, and they're very, very focused on how they do it. It's not just one item and one program. It's a very, very focus, so we appreciate them coming in and sharing that with us. We'll have another showcase in our next meeting, which will be April 14.
Great, thank you. Finding a lot of questions, is there anything?
Just as I reported last month, it meets on a quarterly basis, and I don't have a date in my calendar yet, but...
I think it's in two weeks.
Yeah, I thought it was sometime towards the end of March. I just don't, I don't have it in my calendar. It's coming up. I will report off at the April meeting.
Wonderful, thank you. Legislation and Policy, will you?
Yes, so we just met this morning, and the call things we hit, we did hear from Irene Precia Ronza, remote learning standards that she shared here. And then we also spent the rest of the time doing a reflection on what we had heard on the racial imbalance from West Hartford and Fairfield and Greenwich, who had come and presented to us last fall, early winter, and really talked about what are sort of the levers, starting to explore what are the levers that the board actually has in trying to push for greater attention to actually addressing racial imbalance in these districts. So we have our, no resolutions, by the way, to that just yet. It's the start of the conversation. West Hartford comes before us to give their next update next month, and then Fairfield, though, they come back before us in April. We have received from them an update on their timeline that for folks on the board that had been around, when Fairfield has previously come before us, know that there has not been progress and hasn't been in fifteen years or will be fifteen years by the time they get to the end of their next plan to plan. So we're going to hear from them in April around that work and have a discussion with them at that point in time. So that's the update.
Great, thank you. Look at you. Ready to go.
We got committee chairman Devon Watson and Commissioner Russell Tucker, as well as all of the members of the State Board of Education. It's always a wonderful honor to be able to give you a very brief, and I stress, brief update this afternoon. Given the time that we're at, I would rather present a song for you. So, so many great comments. I mentioned it last month, please, that we've had a significant increase in our overall enrollment. Last year at this time, we were approximately a hundred, or excuse me, a thousand students who are applying for enrollment. This year, we are at over five thousand students. We have pulled through all of those excellent applications. Letters have gone out advising students and parents that they're now in the second round, that they've qualified for, and I'll keep the board updated on the process as we continue to work on our enrollment in addition for 2022, 23. So that's very exciting news. In addition, we are also very excited to jump in with the State Department of Education on the recently released standards for remote learning. We had participants who did attend that webinar on March 1st, who look forward to pursuing the learning advantages and teaching initiatives that that set of standards will provide the CTEC. I'd like to thank the Commissioner and her staff for the support, the ongoing support in CTEC's ability to transition smoothly to an optional practice beginning, in fact, Tuesday, March 1st. In addition, we are participating with our staff in the network, it's now the third distribution of test kits and masks for the districts. And finally, we will continue weekly monitoring and data collection and reporting out so that we're very clear on where we stand in terms of that mask optional practice. As Mr. Chriani mentioned earlier, we are continuing to work very closely with Kathy Venti and also with Laura Stefan on the progress of the separation plan, including the staffing and projected fiscal needs that will go with that staffing as we get that report to the legislature, and we're very grateful for the support in that endeavor. We are continuing to develop our strategic operating plan. If the separation is not enough, we wanted to top that off with the strategic planning process this year as well, and that is making great progress. We've gathered input from the entire district community, which, as you know, runs the gamut across the state of Connecticut with over two thousand staff members, almost twelve thousand students and a community. So we're very excited about that. We're just beginning to pull through all the data that we've collected, and we anticipate drafting an initial version of the SOE for the CTEC's board in this trend. We will be attending actively the K Virtual Day on the Hill. We look forward to that on March 10th as an opportunity for us to grow and improve program in programming and teaching and learning across the district. And then finally, two very positive notes at the end of today's update. We have been recognized, and my thanks to Ajit for all the work that he's done in collaboration with our district. We've been recognized through Keener Tech and Dr. Ken Hillier, who is the principal at Keener Tech. We have shown significant growth in the fast challenge at fifteen point seven percent in one month. So we are very excited about that through the month of February. And finally, the recognition of Black History Month for the month of February. We were featured on WSSB, for those of you who would like a link, I would be happy to share it on to the Commissioner, with our tech school at Oliver Walcott Tech and our principal, Richard Shemlin, whose culinary program was recognized in their efforts to take and specialize recipes, historic recipes, from the eighteen and early nineteen hundreds. Wonderful African-American authors of recipe books took the recipes, adapted them to the 21st century tastes of their fellow students and prepared them as part of a celebration for Black History Month. We're very proud of what they were able to do, and hopefully you'll be able to see that video clip. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Wonderful. And even NASB report?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
The new board chair of NASB has a goal of having every state represented on the Government Affairs Committee and the Public Education Positioning Committee. So the four area directors, of which I'm one, sent out invitations to people from the states to join these committees. We've had some pretty good response, and we had the Government Affairs Committee met yesterday, which I'm the chair, and we had a pretty good number of new members to that. So the other thing is that the legislative conference is coming up later this month in Washington, and Vice Chair Benham and I are planning to attend, and we're going to have the opportunity to meet with members of our congressional delegation. So the NASB staff is putting together talking points for us to use, and I would welcome talking points from the department or the board. I'm not sure how that would work. I need some guidance, I guess, on how we would decide what we should be saying to our congressional delegation.
Okay, I'm actually joining you as well, so I will see you in D.C.
You're joining as well?
Yes, I will be there as well. And yes, let's connect with the Commissioner and Dan around any federal acts that would be supporting all the work here. All right, thank you. And, sir, there is a written report. Anything you want to highlight?
Yes, there is a written report, ongoing PD and a lot of webinar series, a lot on special education, you can read there. And I would just address the back page, because I know this has been questions from the board, is the update on the African-American, Black Puerto Rican, Latina courses studies. We are hoping that at an upcoming meeting either in May or June, when we're hoping to have that meeting in the evening, that people that were part of the pilot program, including teachers and students, will be here to present a little bit to us so that we can, because I know that questions have come up about that, in particular the pilot, to have them come during the day would only just increase to the other difficulties that our schools are dealing with, and pulling out their teachers is not a good thing. So hopefully, we'll get an update in our evening meeting, which will be May or June.
Where would that meeting take place?
I don't think it's even been, yeah.
It hasn't been arranged yet, you know?
It hasn't been arranged yet, I don't believe, no.
All right, all right, very good. Are there any questions on any of the committee reports? Seeing none, I'm sure there'll be no objection to a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. All right, we are turning at one twenty.
Thank you all.
And I will launch this in...